Again, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Waukegan City Council Meeting for February 7th, 2011. Roll call please.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moisio.
President.
Alderman Figueroa.
President.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman Needham.
President.
President.
President accounted for. We do have a quorum. Could you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to let everybody know that we are going to have an executive session this evening. I'm going to call to go into executive session after audience time so that our labor attorney then can be released to head on home. And it also has been asked if we might be able to take one item out of order which would be under new business recommended actions by corporation counsel, item G, the emergency purchase order for snow removal not to exceed $150,000. So once I get done with the mayor's comments and audience time, we go into executive session, I will then ask for a motion to allow that to be brought up and dealt with out of order so that our Director of Public Works, we can get this out of the way and allow him to go home and get some very much deserved rest. Well, it was quite a week, wasn't it? Everybody have fun?
Yeah.
Well, my mayor's comments are going to be a little bit lengthy this evening for a very specific reason because of what happened in this last week. I have some people that I want to acknowledge, so. So I want to first extend my gratitude to all of the hard-working city employees that made a real difference during the great winter disaster of 2011. Public Works has been doing an exemplary job of dealing with conditions that no one has experienced in this area in nearly a generation. Our guys ran themselves to the ragged edge, worked in almost total white-out conditions to make sure that by Thursday the residents of Waukegan were able to drive pretty much anywhere they needed to go. Tom Hagerty and Steve Drew did a masterful job of running the operation orchestrating the efforts with military precision, all the while making sure everything was done safely, and I am proud to say we suffered no injuries. Our police and fire departments work closely with Public Works, an effort spearheaded by Chiefs Young and Greathouse and their crews to make sure that calls for service were answered anywhere in Waukegan at any time. Even an ambulance coming in from Antioch was escorted by our plows down to Vista in order to provide needed medical care. Helping to tie all of this together is our crew in dispatch who handled the calls, kept the information flowing out to the crews out in the snow, and in general made sure that those that called for aid or information got what they needed. Our Head of Public Relations, David Motley, worked to document the effort and provide any logistical support he possibly could throughout the whole event. Every one of those employees will be receiving a letter of commendation, but I thought it would be appropriate to read their names as provided by each department into the record. Following that, I would ask you to join me as we stand and give them all a well-deserved round of applause. Let's wait until I read the names, so bear with me. We've got a few names because we had a lot of people working. This would be out of Public Works. Louis Aguilar. Calvin Alba. Edgar Albino. Hector Albino. Jose Berrios. David Bethke. Ron Selesnik. Salvador Cisneros. James Kokomo. Ernesto Corona. Alvin Kraygen. Kevin Crowley. Sean Crowley. Dan Cruz. David Daniels. Kurt Day. Antonio Dominguez. Brent Dominowski. Mike Drassler. Steve Drew. William Durkin. Andrew Evans. Ed Evans. Jose Figueroa. Mark Fortin. Mark Fragassi. Edgar Fuersd. Chris Garland. John Gerganos. Marshall Harris. Jose Henriquez. David Hernandez. Heriberto Hernandez. Octavius Hicks. Dan Hummel. James Jamison. John Yastrum. William Yaohi Heinan. Alonso Jenkins. Mary Kay Jardine. Doug Jones. Bruce Kennedy. Jim King. Chris King. Dallas Mayfield. Jeff McBride. Mark McGuire. Scott Miller. David Mottazuma. Joe Morocco. Jeff Mazinski. Blake Neff. Efren Navarez. Oswaldo Navarez. N'Gia N'Goyen. Randy Olson. Steve Petticourt. John Pete. Ray Peterson. Keith Rep. Mike Ricchio. I'm sorry, Ricchio. Hiram Rios. Aaron Ripentrel. From dispatch, we had Edgar Rivera. Dave Robison. Robert Rogers. Rick Russell. Eduardo Salgado. Adam Smith. Tom Smith. Arturo Torres. Mike Voynovich. Tori Warship. Damon Washington. Kevin Weekly. Jeff Walworth. Jim Wright. Marcus Zachary. And Gary Snedursik. These are the officers from the Waukegan Police Department that worked this event. Chief Dan Greathouse. Deputy Chief Mark McCormick. Deputy Chief Wayne Wallace. Commander Robert Kikkorian. Lieutenant John Oliver. Lieutenant Jim Leonard. Lieutenant Irv Grimes. Lieutenant Joe Flora. Lieutenant Tony Joseph. Sergeant Joe Creppen. Sergeant Buckingham. Sergeant Devon Rousch. Sergeant Bill Walker. Sergeant Scott Chastain. Sergeant Tim McGurn. Sergeant Mark Jackson. Sergeant Corey Kelly. Sergeant Brandon Langlais. Officer Ken Rocher. Officer Jerry Dixon. Officer Dave Mercado. Officer Dominique Capelluti. Officer Jeff Verdina. Officer John Fong. Officer Marvin Hodo. Officer Santiago Lopez. Officer Lloyd Santiago. Officer Johnny Jimenez. Officer Dan Shepherd. Officer Chris Alby. Officer Dave Mahoney. Officer Yaroslav Gruzada. Officer Kathy Pavilainen. Officer Mike Leusch. Officer Mike Heidler. Officer Roy Drexler. Officer Colleen Thomas. Officer Ray Rinaldi. Officer Dave Martenson. Officer Mike Reed. Officer Ed Heidler. Officer Joy Basinger. Officer Rolando Villaforte. Officer Bilal Hakim. Officer Don Paulson. Officer Mallory Baker. Officer Armando Alexander. Officer Kelly Gordon. Officer Barry Graber. Officer Brian Falotico. Officer Angie Begay. Officer Brian Bradfield. Officer Jose Nieves. Officer Laney Newman. Officer Thomas Donan. Officer Peter Lyons. Officer Ken Peton. Officer Brian Mayshick. Officer Justin Shields. Officer Brian Foster. Officer Chris Roloff. Officer James Kirby. Officer Keith Lamanna. Officer Mark Sturdavant. Officer Rigoberto Amaro. Officer April Purley. Officer Andrew White. Officer William Griffo. Officer Al Cancino. Officer Stefan Driscoll. Officer Joshua Tran. Officer Irene Catralas. Officer Mike Harwood. Officer Jerry Vasquez. Officer John Sawstad. Officer Joshua Amon. Officer Daniel Van Hogan. Officer Jacob Novak. Officer Cesar Garcia. Commander Mark Stevenson. Sergeant Keith Zupack. Sergeant Brian Mullin. Detective Larnell Farmer. Detective Thomas Granger. Detective Timothy Ives. Detective Mike Jones. Detective Francisco Lopez. Detective Charles Schletz. Detective Andrew Uloa. Detective Aleos Villalobos. Detective Michael Taylor. Detective Kristen Luca. Detective Raymond Fontanila. Detective Michael Mondro. Detective Scott Thomas. Detective Andrew Valco. Detective Arturo Flores. Detective Jason Gutke. Detective Brian Hawbacher. Detective Beth Pesanante. Sergeant Ed Navarro. Detective Elias Aglianos. Detective Frank Cancino. Detective Drew Summers. Detective George Valco. Detective Andrew Orozco. Lieutenant Edward Fitzgerald. Sergeant Pete Michaels. Officer Anthony Paulson. The civilian personnel in the police department were Sue Sasson. Denise Christensen. Irma Garza. Lynn Bats. David Magnuson. Sharon Gallegos. Matthew Hanson. Brandy Melanthen. Tony Yancy. Tisley Butler. Dawn Ramirez. Gary Modlin. Donna Monk. Steve Nutgrass. Gina Gallegos. Rebecca Kumar. And Susan Elliott out at Animal Control. We had our folks from IT came in to make sure that our systems were functioning during this event. And I want to thank Ron Gardella. Eric Vella. Lance Johnson. And Danny Bennett. Now from, bear with me while I find it, it's probably, here we go, from the fire department. The following fire department personnel arrived to relieve the previous shift's personnel who worked throughout the night during the blizzard of 2011. Battalion Chief John Schmidt slept at the station. Captain Mike Scholey. Firefighter Paul Rice. Firefighter Al Ramos. Firefighter Chad Gonwa. Lieutenant Tom Christensen. Firefighter Jacob Mount. Firefighter Wayne Delonker. Firefighter Laura Lee Thomas. Firefighter Chris Conkey. Lieutenant Mark DeRose. Firefighter John Cruz. Firefighter Mark Petrazak. Firefighter Beth Moss. Additional personnel was as follows. B.C. Dan Wright. Captain Pat Gallagher. Lieutenant Matt Burleson. Lieutenant Tom Zellens. Lieutenant Joel Verbeck. Then the next, late in the next day, the following personnel arrived. Lieutenant John Swetolski. Mike Bab. Robert Callahan. Lieutenant Jeff Welch. John Nordgren. John Carrier. Jeremy Brown. Lieutenant Dave Rigney. David Freeman. Eric Bocky. Marcus Jackson. Tim McGrane. And Paul Dawson. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand with me and offer them a round of applause Letters of commendation will be going out to each and every one of these individuals who made sure that this city stayed safe and the city stayed open. Yes, we lost a day, but compare that to what's going on around us. People are still digging out like we are, but even more so. So all I can say is that this was an astounding achievement in the face of what basically were overwhelming odds against getting all of this work done. So I want to thank them very, very much, and we do appreciate the hard work and the time that you put in. Now, I owe a belated thank to Izelle Robbins, Susannah Figueroa, and Dave Motley for the hard work they put in on our foreclosure presentation that was held several weeks ago. They brought in a great mix of speakers in order to inform and interact with residents that might be experiencing difficulties in maintaining their mortgages. Another Spanish-language event is in the plans, as is a workshop for prospective homebuyers. The dates for the new events will be made available as soon as they have been set. Dave Motley asked me to announce, I think he gave me two things, and I probably have misplaced one of them. Sorry, Dave. We have a public forum called Get Involved: Volunteer Opportunities in the Community. Wednesday, February 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. to be held here in the City Hall, featuring the Waukegan Arts Council, Waukegan Main Street, and Waukegan Park District. And if groups that rely on volunteers are looking for help and they're looking for contacts, I would suggest that they come to that event because they may run into some people who'll be willing to extend a helping hand to them and the people that they serve. Pardon, Chris? The 16th of February, 6:30 to 7:30 here. All right. I'm going to read some information here that has to do with items that are going to be on the agenda coming up under ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we're going to be addressing the need to plug a projected $10 million budget shortfall created due to the results of the vote that was taken on the city's tax levy. We have a number of items in this package, and while some have the ability to address our deficit, most of them are law enforcement or code enforcement activities that are almost impossible to quantify relative to revenue streams and as such are of little or no use in planning our budget for the next fiscal year. First, the efforts relative to the sale of property owned by the city have been ongoing, and given the current real estate climate are unlikely to produce any short-term results and cannot be factored into the budget process. The ban on handheld cellphone use makes sense from a public safety standpoint and should be adopted, but we cannot project the level of revenues from this, and again, it will have little or no impact on the overall budget process. The bail bond item is useful as well, but will not have a major impact on the budgetary process. There is no way to predict how much this option will raise because predicting the rate of crime is never precise, and we can only plug in an estimated number based on previous levels of arrest activity. Ambulance fees are another area that is going to be difficult to define the impact on the budget. While all the components of that item are solid and will help in collections of old monies, it is too imprecise to use as a solid budget planning item. The increases in water and sewer fees and fines is one item that is far more predictable in the revenue to be generated and will have a positive and measurable impact on the bottom line as well as being an easy set figure to use as we plan the coming budget. We should adopt the maximum increase possible in order to shore up the budget deficit. The food and beverage tax is one that will be subject to the external forces of the economy, but we have enough statistical evidence to indicate that it will have a positive impact on the budget deficit. The downside is it takes up to 90 days to implement the tax, but I believe the forward-looking impact of that increase is meaningful enough to move it forward for consideration. The building department fees are another area where it is a little harder to predict the effect on the budget, but any increase in revenue, small or large, would be welcome. The general business license fee increase is a bit easier to predict the effect on the budget because it is a fixed target, even when considering that some businesses may still succumb to the ongoing recession. The rental license fee increase is similar to the general business fee in that it provides a fairly solid projection of revenues generated and will be easier to plug into the process. The nuisance abatement fee increase is another one that is hard to predict the impact on the budget because if it is successful, it will automatically be a self-diminishing source of revenue. It is on the agenda for discussion, but I believe it is one we need to move forward with quickly. This concludes my overview of what will be before this body tonight. I want everyone to remember that we are facing some very harsh choices as a result of the levy vote and the attendant $10 million deficit that has been created. Even if we adopt every fee increase on the table, we will still face an approximately $3 million shortfall which will necessitate cuts, possibly in both staffing and in expenses. It is unfortunate that we are forced to put these fee increases on the table now as none of them can be used as tax deductions. If we had adopted the earlier levy increase, as unpopular as it seemed to be, homeowners would have been allowed to deduct those increases on their income tax. Find my sheet for public comment. Here we go, I got it. Okay. We'll go to audience time, public comment. First up is Josephine Stewart. Josephine, could you please come to the podium to speak? If you can squeeze in there, sorry about the screen. And please give your address.
My address is Marshall Parkway, Waukegan.
Address and numbers.
I wanted to talk to you about the code enforcement, about rental property. I live in a rental property that I've lived in for 20 years, and it keeps getting inspected and inspected and inspected, and there's never anything wrong with the property other than stuff that the committee feels that has to be new, like sprinkler system put in the house and stuff like that. The house is very well-maintained and it's been maintained, and I feel like the owner is being discriminated against because she's an easy target for, she pays her taxes on time and that, so it's somebody easy to go and get money from. If it was that the house was demolished or if it was coming down, like a lot of the houses in Waukegan that need to be ticketed and being taken care of, which I understand code is not allowed to go on private property that has no trespassing signs to give a ticket. I just found out. So if that's the case, then I think every house and apartment complex in Waukegan should put no trespassing signs on front of their house. And then no revenue would be gone. But there are a lot of places in Waukegan that I can give you a list of that need to be checked, and there are a lot of people that say the same thing. So I think code should be outdoing more of getting with their hands untied to get more of this city who I've lived in for 58 years now and love dearly to get it back to where it used to be and start stamping down the peoples that need to be stamped down on and stop picking on people that shouldn't be picked on. My aunt and my mother-in-law lived in an apartment complex for many, 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 many years in Waukegan, and their apartments were never, never inspected. And I can't understand that. I keep getting told, well, every apartment building, every apartment's being inspected. Well, they were for many years and they never were. One lived there seven years and didn't have it. One lived there 20 years and never had it. So I don't understand the difference in why certain people are being harassed and certain people aren't. That's what it feels like. It feels like harassment because there's never anything wrong. One time code person came in, there's nothing wrong with this place, I don't know what to put down. And that shouldn't be, but they had to put something down. Yeah. So I think things can be changed with code enforcement rules and what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. They should be able to go on property that has no trespassing signs to give a ticket Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Next up is Violet Ricker.
My name is Violet Ricker. I'm the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. I'm just here tonight to give you an update about what Main Street's got going on, and I've passed out to our city council members a calendar of our 2011 events, which is available downstairs in the lobby if you'd like to pick up a copy. Just to highlight a couple quickly, this Wednesday we have one of our monthly meetings, which is where we give an update on what's going on. We'll be talking about a couple of different projects, and our featured speaker this month is Dr. Al Baldwin of the College of Lake County Lakeshore Campus. That meeting is February 9th at noon at Greentown Tavern in downtown Waukegan. And I'd also just like to thank the mayor again for noting the volunteer event that we'll be sponsoring with them on February 16th, 6:30 here, so we'd encourage you to come to that. And as Valentine's Day is coming up, if anybody is in need of flowers, I'd encourage you to support your downtown florist and check out pierceflorist.com. You can call them at 847-336-0460, and they're located at 218 North Genesee Street if you'd like to stop in. So if you'd like to send flowers for Valentine's Day or to celebrate Jack Benny's birthday, I'd encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Violet. Next, Mr. Dan Trainoff.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to speak about--
Dan, could you give your address, please?
Oh, 202 South Elmwood. I'd like to speak about keeping in mind the importance of Waukegan as an urban destination and community. And what I mean by that, Waukegan has always been the urban center of Lake County. In terms of image, that doesn't work with some people. They see low income and it scares them off, which is part of being an urban community. Now, there's also a positive side to being an urban community, and that has to do with vibrant urban living and a nightlife and everything that attracts people to live in communities like Chicago. The purpose of my bringing this to mind is just to remind the council the importance of that, that Waukegan needs to always consider that Waukegan is an urban community and it needs to be, the positive side of that needs to be exploited. For instance, you may not have people from certain communities want to come to Waukegan. I know that very well because of certain image issues. But there are a whole lot of people just to the south of us that fully understand that a low-income neighborhood does not provide a valid reason to not live in a community or go to a community. So we just need to constantly remind ourselves to further that process. And it really, in my opinion, it has to be done in downtown Waukegan to the extent that we need to always pursue pioneering enterprises that have urban flavor to them. And that means vibrant urban type of living experience that people go to Chicago for, but they can have an alternative here. You may not get people from certain parts of Lake County to move into Waukegan ever, but you will be able to get certain people who understand urban living to move into Waukegan. I think that's the crux. That's the trick to Waukegan. And also to further that, special events are a part of the vibrancy of a community. And I've, I used to voluntarily organize a special event in Waukegan, and I would have loved to have city government waive the fees and obstacles, I don't know if obstacles is the right word for it, but I'll use that word now, to volunteer groups or nonprofit groups putting on special events. The people, if they're volunteering their time, they're working very hard. Sometimes, especially in this economy, money is an issue, and a little bit of help here and there would might make the difference between a volunteer group presenting a special event in Waukegan that would draw people from surrounding communities into Waukegan. They have a good time here. They leave with an improved image of Waukegan, and I think the city should help out in that regard, to be able to consider where a special event is coming from. If it's for-profit, it may be treated differently than a nonprofit strictly volunteer organization. And I guess that's about all I have to say. One other quick thing, there is a problem with aluminum recyclable theft in Waukegan. It's a huge issue. It's a huge issue in a lot of communities, and it goes on a lot here. And it's not just out of the recycle bins, it's out of the garbage containers. And there is a city ordinance that prohibits both of those, Section 10-9. I called three times last summer, and the police are not enforcing it, and even though there's two ordinances relative to that in our books. And some communities consider the theft of aluminum to amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't doubt it. There's a lot of aluminum taken out of recycle bins and garbage containers in Waukegan. I've seen it. So just consider that. I remember sitting through the council meeting years ago when recycling started, and the money that was gained from collecting recyclables was to offset the cost of the collection. So that's probably hitting us to the tune of many thousands of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Trainoff. I appreciate your comments. Next, we have Mr. Rolando Villaforte.
I have a statement to read on behalf of our union.
Mr. Rolando Villaforte, could you state your address, please?
My name is Rolando Villaforte, and I live at 2730 West Bonnybrook. I am the president of the PBLC, Unit Number 42. That's our labor organization, so we represent our patrol officers as a union. Recently, our membership voiced concerns about our chief-- Recently, our membership voiced concerns about our chief and the manner in which he leads our department. As a result of these comments, a special meeting was held and a vote took place in order to determine the membership's official opinion of our chief. It's my duty to inform you that as a result of this meeting, our membership reached a determination that there's no confidence in Chief Grayhouse as Chief of Police. At this point in time, we're not going to discuss the reasons why we reached this decision. I did meet with the chief to tell him about this special meeting, its purpose, and the results. We did discuss some of the issues that were, that were brought up by the membership. Not all of them, we didn't have time for all of them. And he requested to meet with the membership himself so that he can find out for himself what these issues are and how they can be resolved, if they can be resolved at all. If our chief honestly believes that, you know, these issues can be resolved, then the PBLC Executive Board is willing to cooperate in order to most efficiently address our membership's concerns as well as those of the Police Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Villaforte. Mr. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks of 801 McAllister Avenue, representing National Action Network of Lake County and Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. As you know, you know, we have stressed them many times before that as organizations, some of our priorities as far as initiatives are peace initiatives and issues surrounding violence prevention in the community. And we know that as the season change and it come closer to the summer and the spring, unfortunately, we have a higher level of violence. And with that being said, on a number of occasions, I have came before the City Council addressing the issues of inappropriate handguns on the streets, specifically regarding the issues surrounding the handgun ordinance which was proposed as far as handguns dealing with the situation like with smoking gun, where we had a stolen gun. I'm seriously interested in what is, the last time I spoke with the corporate counsel, my understanding was that it was in the judicial, I think it's in judicial, somewhere in the Judiciary Committee. But, but I really, you know, I'm coming back because, you know, I really don't want this to become rhetoric, and I'm having to come up here. So, hopefully, somebody can address this issue and really get back with me because we really need to do whatever we can to address the issues of making sure that we don't have any guns out here on the street that are not supposed to be, and even more importantly, that they don't end up in the wrong hands. So, hopefully, somebody can get in touch with me and talk with me about that or our organization. Thank you. And everybody have a enlightened Black History Month celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Before we go on, there's one thing that I got lost in my shuffle here that Dave Motley asked me to announce. On Wednesday, February 9th, North Shore Gas will hold a press conference to present 600, broken down to 200 per township, carbon monoxide detectors to the cities of Waukegan, Zion, and North Chicago and Shields Townships. First alert through a partnership with North Shore Gas matched the utility's donation of 300 carbon monoxide detectors. The press conference will take place at 8:30 a.m. at the Waukegan City Hall, 100 North Martin Luther King Avenue. Andrea Danks, Government and Community Relations Representative, will present the CO detectors to the three townships on behalf of North Shore Gas. Representatives from the three townships along with their fire chiefs are expected to attend. So, I would extend this invitation to each of the members of the City Council and the public out there listening this evening to come and see how this is all structured, and you may possibly be able to take advantage of a carbon monoxide detector.
What's the date and time?
The date, again, is February the 9th at, I'm sorry.
This week.
This week, that's correct. At 8:30 a.m., and I do believe that this, that this will be held up in these chambers. So, again, you're all welcome to come or let friends or family know that this is being done and ask them to come and avail themselves of one of these carbon monoxide detectors. Now, what I'd like to do with the support of the City Council, we have two items, as I described, I'd like to move up before we go into executive, one item before we go... No, excuse me, I take that back. We have two items that we need to take care of before we go into executive session so that a couple of folks can, can leave. So, I'd like to take a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to move Item G under Number 10, New Business Recommended Actions by Corporation Counsel, up to the agenda to come in following audience time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. What we have is an emergency purchase order for snow removal not to exceed $150,000. This was as a result of our need to call in assistance to help clean the streets and sidewalks and curved, I'm sorry, corners of snow. And I would accept a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Tom. Go home and get a little harder and sleep. Appreciate you sticking around. The next item would be under 11 Ordinances and Resolutions, Item A. The ordinance which is abating a portion of taxes heretofore levy to pay principal of and interest on certain general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2011 of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois. We have a representative, Barb Chevalier is here from Spear Financial, correct? And I, I will speak very quickly while she's coming up. I will let you know that...
Motion seconded by who?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Motion by Alderman Conkin to move it up the agenda, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I'm sorry. But basically, what we're dealing with here is this was a look at paying off some of the bonds that we had. I believe some of them are out in the Fountain Square area that are, were of higher interest, and to pay them off with, if I remember correctly, a non-taxable bond. Was I, am I correct in that, or was that a TIF?
The issue was refunding bond for savings, and it would be a Series 2011 bond issue. But since the City Council voted to have what we call parameters ordinance to go ahead with this, if certain savings targets would be made, the interest rates have gone up, and the refunding is not feasible at this time. So, the purpose of the ordinance is to abate the 2010 levy on the 2011 bonds that didn't, hasn't, haven't sold yet. But, we will be watching it very carefully, and as soon as the rates come down, you are poised to sell this bond issue for savings, so.
Okay. Well, do we have any questions by any of the Aldermen?
Yeah, I guess, in lame terms, ma'am, what are we trying to do here?
Well, the city had authorized a refunding bond issue. Rates have not gone well, so the bond issue didn't sell. So, when the authorization occurred in November, when you passed the ordinance, there was a levy attached to a prospective bond issue. So, as a housekeeping issue, you want to abate that levy for this year so that, because you haven't sold any bonds. And that's why this abatement ordinance is being presented to you now. If the bond issue had sold and we could save money, there would have been adjustments to the levy that was on file. It was, as we say in a parameters, it was a maximum levy, and we're just eliminating a 2010 levy because you have no bond issue here yet.
All right. Is, now, is there a cost to what you're, we're not selling any bonds, is that correct?
Not at the moment.
Right, because of, because of the interest rate?
Right.
All right.
If the interest rates go well, you will hopefully save money. But at the moment, you have not sold bonds, you do not want to have a levy on file.
So, you don't want a levy on file?
No.
So, you're still going to try to go out and, and, and sell bonds at a specific interest rate?
As soon as interest rates go down and the savings target that have been established by the city has been met, then we would be able to sell bonds for you, but you're not at that point right now.
All right. From a cost standpoint, your fees, there are no fees assessed with, with you doing what we're doing right here?
No.
The fees will be assessed once we go to bond, I mean, once we go to market?
Yes.
We're able to sell those bonds, then come back?
There are no fees that you have paid or are to be paid now, only when the bond issue sells and you achieve a certain savings, then...
Okay. And just to help us out from a savings standpoint, what are some of the target savings, real quick?
The target that you had was 2.5% of the refunded bonds. So, that the savings would be at that level.
At that, at that level?
Yeah.
And the dollar amount that we're looking to, to go to market with?
Well, the bond issue would be something in a $25 million range.
And that's the refin, that we're refinancing?
Yes.
I forget, which one were we refinancing again, ma'am?
This is the Fountain Square Bonds, the 2003A bonds.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman. Any further questions? No? We'll take a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to abate a portion of taxes heretofore levy to pay principal of and interest on certain bonds as presented. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate you staying for this. And now, we will go back into regular order. At this point, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes of January 18th, 2011, regular meeting and executive session. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Conkin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. I think at this point, what I'd like to do is we will go in, I'll take a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending labor matters. We have a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. I would anticipate about 15 minutes in executive session. So, thank you. Okay. Motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. We will now go back to the regular agenda. Item 7, excuse me, committee reports and motions. Alderman Larson.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, I apologize.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
President.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman Larson.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Okay, all present. We will go to Item 7, Committee Reports and Motions. Public Safety Committee report, Alderman Larson, please.
Don't want you all choked up, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's a committee report. The Public Safety Committee met on January 24th, 2011, at 6:00 p.m. Minutes were approved. There was no old business, uh, new business. There was a traffic survey regarding handicap parking at 210 South Sheridan Road. The City, Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence, commonly known as 210 South Sheridan Road. An ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Figueroa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B was another handicapped parking traffic survey. This address is 1033 North Elmwood Avenue in the 5th Ward. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence, commonly known as 1033 North Elmwood Avenue, an ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you.
Item C, request to accept quote for capital improvement project installation of a video and audio system for the Police Department interview rooms. The Public Safety Committee recommends, an ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to accept the low quote for the purchase and installation of a video and audio system for the Police Department interview rooms from Microception Incorporated, 4555 Manzel Road, Suite 300, Alpharetta, Georgia 30022, at a cost not to exceed $29,999 even, an ISO move. And this will be referred to finance so that we, this was all part of the bond issue, but it goes through finance after passing through here.
How are you going to do that?
Okay. All right. We'll take a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call. Item C, yes. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you.
Item D, request to accept bid for capital improvement project, Police Department Jail Deluge System. The Public Safety Committee recommends, an ISO move, that the proper city officials be authorized to accept the bid for a retrofit of the deluge system in the jail facility from Sterling Fire Protection LLC, 870 Allegheny Road, Grayslake, Illinois 60030, at a cost not to exceed $22,990, $990 even, an ISO move. And again, this is referred to finance as part of our capital improvement project money.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item E, request to waive the bid process and purchase gang tracking software. This supplements our current booking system and interfaces with that. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid process and purchase gang tracking software with funds from the congressionally mandated anti-gang grant number 2008-DD-BX-0348. From the sole source provider, New World Systems, Inc., 888 West Beaver, Big Beaver Road, Suite 600, Troy, Michigan 48084, for an amount of $22,380 even, an ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you.
And there was some other information things that we're just...
Okay. Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Figueroa, please.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met last Monday at 6:30 p.m. First item on the agenda, on this agenda, is the approval of the amended noise ordinance. You all have a copy of the amended noise ordinance. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move, the approval of the uniform noise ordinance standards for stationary and moving targets. Now, the changes that have been made include the standard of 50 feet for, distance of 50 feet or more from the device that is making the noise, and it spells out the fines, and it also goes to adjudication court, which is something that had been requested in the past. So, ISO move.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Moisio.
As I read through the ordinance, the problem with sound, I've got my beautiful church bells that go off at 6 o'clock and noon, and you can hear them a block away. They would be exempt from that, I would hope.
There are, Alderman, there are some, I've read, also, yeah, there are some exemptions, airports, construction...
I don't see my church bell.
We probably, do we need to put that in there?
I don't want my church bells to be legal. My kids came home with those ringing. Tells me what time of day it is, and my watch don't work.
I pity the poor person who raises a citation for the church.
Alderman Tempest, if you so wish, you can make a motion to amend, to add the language "church bells." So we have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to amend, adding the language of making sure that church bells are protected. Roll call on the motion to amend.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
And I wish Joyce Evans was here to...
She's right there. She's right there. Are ya? Hey, Joyce. I missed you earlier. Yes.
No, because you'd be violating our noise ordinance.
Alderman Rivera. Our vote, I, in enforcement, will be the only thing that will get the message across.
Okay, thank you. The ayes have it.
Next item on the agenda, Your Honor, has to do with the towing ordinance. Now, before I give it over to the Corporation Council, you've been given a copy of the amended towing ordinance. The motion out of committee was to have the Corporation Council draft the changes that is recommended in committee. These changes do not take the teeth out of the towing ordinance. We should call it a public safety, because, in committee, we talked about calling it a public safety, because it has improved public safety, in the sense that fewer accidents have been, have been experienced, and our insurance rates are going down. But the point is, that I wanted to give, make sure that not only the Alderman have an opportunity to read the changes that came out of committee, but also that the police chief has an opportunity for his staff to read it, to make sure that it's in keeping with the way that, that's enforceable, and the changes that have been going on. So, Corporation Council, would you briefly explain some of the changes that, or the changes that we made to the towing ordinance?
This ordinance does two things. It, in some ways, strengthens the sanctions that can be imposed for driving on our streets, well, committing certain offenses. And at the same time, it introduces the ability to exercise some discretion, both on the officer's part, who makes the arrest, and on the part of the hearing officer, who determines the We cleaned up some of the language in our early ordinance, under the Conduct Prohibited section. There was a list of various offenses that triggered the application of this ordinance, everything from using the card to solicit prostitution or deal drugs, to DUI, or driving without a valid license or mandatory insurance coverage. In light of the state statute, which combines the latter two violations, both the lack of a valid license and the lack of having insurance coverage, together as being the triggering event for the impoundment, we follow the state statute to mirror state law. And our new paragraph B4 brings those two violations together, as the trigger for the towing and the storage of the vehicle. The paragraph C introduces some of that discretion that we were lacking in our prior ordinance. Under the prior ordinance, our officers felt compelled to tow vehicles because of the shell nature of it. They felt they had no discretion when a violation had occurred, that the vehicle simply had to be towed and stored. What we have done now is to allow the, we've authorized the officer to do so, but not mandate that he do so. And we have accounted for the situation which got us into a lawsuit over the last several years, concerning a situation where the owner of the vehicle arrived at the arrest scene shortly after the arrest, fully licensed and insured. But again, because of the language of the ordinance, the mandatory nature of it, the officer felt that he still had to tow the vehicle. Under the new version of the ordinance, if the driver who was arrested is able to provide for the speedy and efficient removal of the car by a qualified driver, proof of insurance, then a towing of the car and a storage of the car and impoundment of the vehicle can be avoided.
Newton, may I have a question, please?
Yes.
I'm kind of confused here. It says that if the vehicle is not covered by liability insurance, now, the insurance is on the vehicle, so how can a new driver come up with proof of insurance? If your vehicle's not insured, the vehicle's not insured.
Insurance actually pertains to both vehicles and drivers. Let me give you an example, Alderman. You are given permission to drive my car, okay? And someone's injured because of, arguably, you know, it didn't penetrate the signal line or something. Normally, my insurance would cover that, okay? If for some reason, however, mine didn't, yours would. That's why the state statute is phrased in terms of the vehicle being insured. But we also didn't want to have a situation where the, our officers might turn the keys of a car over to someone who had proceeded then to drive it upon our streets, and it turns out that the vehicle wasn't insured, nor was he. So in essence, people would be out there, exposed to his negligence, with no source of recovery, if they were injured. So we were trying to, to bridge that gap. So we didn't want a car turned over to anyone who didn't have a license and an insurance. Frankly, these situations should prove insurance as the insurance card. So that was the, that was the idea there. We just didn't want to get, we didn't want to compound the situation by releasing a vehicle to someone who could not protect other drivers.
Okay, thank you.
Surely. There, in terms of the penalty, and this had come up, there was some thought that the penalty was, in some respects, too severe. Other members of the council thought, in some respects, it was just right. Others thought that maybe, certainly for second violations, it was not strong enough. So what we've done, pursuant to the input of the Judiciary Committee, was to keep the penalty of 500 for the first offense, raise it to 750, which is new, for a repeat offense, but to allow the hearing officer, upon demonstration by the offender, of extenuating circumstances or undue hardship, to reduce that $500 fine to a five, no lower than 250, in essence, to be able to cut it in half, or something between that and the full 500, depending upon unusual circumstances that are brought to the hearing officer's attention during the hearing. Those are the primary substantive changes. There is reference here to uniform towing policies and procedures of the city. There had been some concern that in certain instances, some extras might have been added on to certain towing and storage bills, that there was not uniformity necessarily between the various towing companies with whom the city does business in this regard. So we are in the process of putting together a uniform towing and storage manual, policy manual, which will become a part, then, of every contract the city makes with the various towing companies who we call upon to tow vehicles in these situations. And that way, the charges will be in there, people will know exactly what they're being charged for. The city has control to make sure no one is gouged or unfairly dealt with. So that's...
Newton, can I...
Yes, Alderman?
We also mentioned, you know, cars being sold, you know, without, you know, the notification, proper notifications to the owners of the vehicle as well, because that, you know, we've got a lot of complaints on that, too, as well.
Yes.
I know we've mentioned, we talked about that, too, as well.
Thank you for pointing that out. The old, the old version of the ordinance, the current ordinance, you actually, if you followed through, it could technically have allowed the owner of the vehicle never to be given notice, because it was framed, oftentimes, you give notice either to the owner or to the person who is in control of the vehicle at the time of the violation. What we've done now is made sure that that initial notice goes to both, and that if the car is to be released, there was, again, a problem under the current older ordinance, which would have allowed the release of the vehicle to the operator, who may not have been the owner. And I didn't want to see the city of Waukegan releasing a car to anybody other than the title holder. Or the out, the fallback position here, the alternative, is a notarized consent from the owner of the vehicle, that the city can turn it over to Mr. Smith. But those are the, those are ways we've tried to tighten it up and protect both the city and the owner of the, of the car. So those are the major changes. Does any further questions, concerns?
Yeah, Corporation Council, Alderman Cunningham. Corporation Council, one of the biggest complaints that comes from people that I know is, we seize a car, and then we have to go through the process of a hearing officer or a, a hearing, to request a hearing. The unfortunate part is, the request date of the hearing is often, I think, 30 days or two weeks or three weeks. Well, most common folk can't wait two weeks, three weeks, or a month. I know in the city of North Chicago, in the city of Zion, and I think in the city of Gurnee, there is a request for an emergency hearing. What I did not see in here, and I thought we were going to be implementing in part of the new process, an emergency hearing process, which means if that person is contesting what has been told, for whatever reason, then we can do that. I don't see that here. Second, I thought our, our process was going to be for the first offense period, that it would be a minimum of $250, with a maximum of 500. And upon the second offense, it would be a, a maximum of $750. But it looks like you have to continue to pay the 500, call for a hearing, and then hopefully get those dollars returned to you, if the adjudication officer gives the A-OK. Now, my experience is, particularly in government, once you have the money, you're less likely to give the money back. That's just my personal experience. So I think, I know, we're not looking to make a decision on this tonight, this is just something for us to peruse. I think we said in Judiciary Committee that we're, we just give it an opportunity to look at it and hopefully get it out of committee and maybe hold it over. I know, because I have those hanging questions, I want to call them chads, hanging questions, I'm moving to hold this matter over, just to, so I can shore up what you, you have in place, what I thought, and maybe other Aldermen.
Sure.
But I think we have done, we made some great steps, some great steps to shoring up our public safety, and I'm glad we're getting away from the word "towing ordinance", public safety policy that we're putting in place for the city, to, you know, to give the city of Waukegan and the citizens here an understanding that we are truly looking to make sure the city, is, the people who are driving on our roads are doing in accordance to, on the city law, the state law, and I guess the county law. But thank you, thank you very much.
If I, Alderman, if I might...
No, I just wanted to say that we haven't had a motion yet, so let me make that motion to...
It's being held over, I guess.
Yeah, well, yeah, but there's no motion right now to hold over. So let me make the motion to accept the, the ordinance as presented, and then, to be seconded, and then we can hold it over.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Newsom.
Okay.
And we have the...
Move to hold it over.
Further comments by Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you. This public safety ordinance has been in force for five years now, and during that time, the amount of violations has dropped dramatically, has been proven and talked about in committee for some time. As a matter of fact, the city of Waukegan, good drivers have enjoyed a discount on their insurance rates, because this ordinance has proven to improve public safety by, you know, thousands of incidents over the last five years. It's been told to me by my insurance broker that the average licensed and insured driver in Waukegan has enjoyed about an $80 to $100 a year benefit, just in the liability insurance cost, if that's all they carry. So if you extrapolate that, and we have roughly 57,000 stickers we sell every year, every year, over the last couple of years, there's been about $5.7 million of economic benefit to Waukegan residents who are good drivers, since we've instituted this public safety ordinance. We have other cities that have copied it, and I've asked our Corporation Council to look at Elgin and Gurnee for the language in their ordinances, because I think this is getting to be fluffy. I don't, there's a, trying to tie in, as I understand it, you've got to have, you know, license violation and an insurance violation for this to really, truly be effective for our police to act on immediately. I don't think that's right. And I think the state language that our Corporation Council refers to, he admitted that it, I think, I won't put words in his mouth, but it's not exactly clear what the state intends as well, tying those two together. And I'm, and I've requested that Elgin and Gurnee and a couple of the other ordinances that have, you know, superseded what we initiated all those years ago, be provided to the council so that we can see how these other cities attack, and then apparently with, with very little problems from their drivers in their communities. So I'm glad we're holding this up. I'm looking for more information, and I think the public safety clearly has been improved through the enactment of this ordinance, and we, the fact that we're looking at some kinds of floors, the fact that we're not allowing promissory notes, et cetera, to be presented to take the car back is important, but I look forward to more information before I vote on this. Thank you.
One, one last item, and it has to do with a package that was prepared by Corporation Council. I believe there's a couple Aldermen that did not receive their copy. It includes that information on research of what other municipalities have done, and it's got quite, quite a bit of information, so I think you can make sure that all of the Aldermen have received a copy of that, of that packet. And that item is now held over, right, Your Honor?
Yes, Corporation Council has a couple of items he would like to address on this.
We don't need to go into tonight, Alderman Larson, I... We don't need to go into tonight, Alderman Larson, I, we have done some looking into other communities. I've got a list of, say, communities with ordinances similar to ours, in some cases tougher than ours. You're absolutely right. And we do seem to, for some reason, be a litigation magnet, because these other communities have not experienced kind of legal hassles that we have in this regard. So we'll talk further about that, since we're holding over, it won't be labored, but we're looking into these areas and we'll be able to discuss...
Thank you, I, I understand you are.
And secondly, Alderman Cunningham, just real quick, there, no, there's not an emergency hearing provision here, we could surely consider adding one. The hearing is triggered, however, within seven days of the request for hearing being made, so it does not necessarily drag out a long time. The reason the penalty was put at five with the guilty to be reduced by the hearing officer was because of the bond issue. You're able to post a bond before the hearing, get your car released. In what sum does one post a bond? If the fine is completely wide open from $250 to $500. So what we did was we left the fine, if you will, the default position at $500, that would be the bond, then should the hearing officer end up assessing a lesser penalty, that money would be cut back to the offender. So that's why it was done in that fashion. We can talk further next time.
And I think one thing too, that I'd like the chief, maybe at the next City Council meeting, you know, when I spoke with Sergeant Michaels about this about 10 days or so ago, he brought up the fact that the state statute really has a triggering provision of a combination of no license and no insurance. But if one of the two is missing, it doesn't trigger an automatic tow. And I think these are things we need to have looked at and flushed out. I think the other thing, Alderman Larson, that I would like to do, you have several times quoted the, the numbers that you, you received from your insurance agent, and I think what, I'd like to maybe sit down and talk to you about getting in touch with them, and possibly we might even look at doing a citywide survey, so that we have a broader, maybe, input on what those numbers are. So again, that's something, this is not an emergency situation, but we do have some things we need to clarify, and I think in time we'll get to where we need to be. So, thank you, I think that would be it on this one item then.
Okay. Item number C for the Judiciary Committee, under Judiciary Committee, it's zoning calendar 2323. For the petitioner, Santoni Idowu and Luis Gonzalez, the location is 906 Lincoln Street. The request is a map amendment from B2 Community Shopping to R3 Single Family Residence. The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to have the Corporation Counsel draft an ordinance to approve that calendar of 2323 amendment from, to be, wait a minute, make sure I get that right, from B2 Community Shopping to R3 Single Family Residence.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by...
Alderman Conken.
Alderman Conken. Excuse me. What do you have, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item D, what? Item D.
Alderman Figueroa, could I ask you, please, would you confirm that the language, as far as approve, is correct as opposed to, as opposed to draft?
Did I say approve?
That's what I'm asking.
I did, draft, a draft.
Would that have been, which of the language? Because we have two versions that are on two different copies of the agenda. So we're looking to draft, or ask the Corporation Counsel to draft.
My mistake, it was to draft.
Okay, thank you.
Item number D, oh, phew, that's, I'm a little tongue-twisted now. Item number D, it's, has to do with the tax incremental financing, Interested Parties Registry, and the item has been presented to you, the ordinance? Let me get my ordinance as I lost him temporarily. Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to recommend the approval of the Interested Parties Registry for Tax Increment Financing Ordinance as presented. This is going to be in the 8th Ward.
That's correct.
And it has to do with that, that company that's moving into Waukegan, the Spice Company, which, the name eludes me now, but that's, that's what that's for.
Yeah.
The TIF District.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Larson, to approve the Tax Increment Financing Interested Parties Registry, just so that everybody understands what this is. Basically, if we create what is known as a Tax Increment Financing District, which is a way of helping to support businesses, improvements at a location, or growth, or whatever it may be, you have to let the other taxing bodies know that have any part of that TIF District in their authority, that this is being done so that they can be at least apprised of it, they cannot stop us from doing it, but at least we have to give them the courtesy of knowing that we are doing this. So this could include Gurnee School District, it could include other park districts, things like that. So it's really kind of a matter of courtesy that we do this, and, because basically what happens is, is the tax money, instead of going into the pot in the body of government, is rolled back into the business for improvements, so that they can either increase the size of the building, buy new equipment, allow them to hire more people, and grow their business. So this is what we have before us this evening. And I think we're getting it confirmed, because we have two different readings of how it's presented in the agenda, we're going to make sure that we're confirming that this is to approve as opposed to draft. So bear with us just for a moment, please.
Got it, we're here.
Anna's out there, she's in the back.
Anna, did you draft this, is ready to go?
No. It is to approve, it was drafted by Alderman Cunningham.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, so it is to approve. All right, then we will take a, we have the first by Alderman Figueroa, who was the second?
Larson.
Alderman Larson, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The eyes have it, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, there was a, in the Judiciary Committee, there was a Lake County Forest Preserve easement, which is also in the 8th Ward, it's on the corner of Delaney and York House, that's, that's being covered under item F of...
E.
Item E?
Of, of New Business.
Item M?
New Business.
Under New Business.
Under, under New Business.
For business.
But if you want to, I can go ahead and take care of that right now. That was in, I can just let it go for the next, under New Business. The last item, let's see, last item in Judiciary is item E, which is the ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the City Code, making a technical correction to Section 3.4. That technical correction has to do with 16 ounce, which is a pint versus 375 milliliters. Well, anybody who's in the liquor business know that they don't make pints anymore. They still call them pints, but they're 375 milliliters. And so that's a, a technical change that we're making in that, that ordinance. That has been distributed, I did get a copy last, last, last week, that change has been made. So Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve, the approval of the ordinance as presented, amending Chapter 3 of the City Code, making a technical correction to Section 3-40.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, roll call, please.
Oh, you're going to give me that second, right?
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
That concludes the hilarity from the Judiciary Committee for the evening.
We will now move on to the Labor Relations Committee. We have item A, which was an amendment to the Salary Ordinance Regarding Civil Service Secretary Compensation. The civil service secretary in the past had been paid a set amount, $12,000 a year, it didn't depend on how many meetings there were, that was just a set amount for that person to be paid. What we're looking to do is to change this salary ordinance so that the person will be paid on an hourly basis, I believe $15 an hour, if I recall correctly, with a cap of $5,000 on the entire year. And we have a motion by Alderman...
It says $12,000. Yes, we amended it.
It was, it was amended in committee.
$300.
Yeah.
What's it going to be?
So we have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
The eyes have it, thank you. What I would like to do now, and I'm going to jump around again, and I do apologize to everybody, we had a gentleman that was scheduled to present, Mr. Arturo Castro, from the Business and Cultural Affairs University of Mexico in Chicago. When we began the meeting and got through to that point, for some reason, it was thought he was not here. He may have been, and we just didn't see, I'm not sure what happened. But he is here, and if I could beg your indulgence at this time, lady and gentleman, I would like to allow him the time to make his presentation, I think you'll find it interesting. I, I had a meeting with him a while back, I found what he had to say to be something that I think the city of Waukegan should pay attention to. Mr. Castro.
I've been a resident of Waukegan for the past six years. I am born in Mexico, I work for the National University of Mexico. University is the largest university in Mexico, maybe the largest in the continent. We have over 300,000 students. The university has an office in Chicago, has been in Chicago for the past nine years. The university has been in San Antonio, Texas for the last 60 years. And after living here and looking at our community, I realized that there were many things that the University of Mexico could do to improve the lives of many residents here. So until recently, I've met with the mayor, and I've met with the director of, executive director of University Center at Grace Lake, and we are moving forward with implementing educational programs. We will be talking about those specifically. Just to begin with, I'd like to tell you a little bit more about what the university is, what it means for people from Mexico, and what it could mean for the education of people living in Waukegan. So if you bear with me, just a brief video, it'll give you a quick background.
The National Autonomous University of Mexico, UNAM, has played a major role in the history and formation of our country. Its excellence as an institution is recognized throughout the academic world. It has been accredited internationally by the most rigorous university evaluations. But above all, it is backed up by the valuable and responsible work carried out daily by thousands of students, professors, and researchers. UNAM responds to the present and looks toward the future as the country's most important Today, the National University is committed to the formation of new generations of Mexicans that the country requires, as well as generating the cutting-edge knowledge that stimulates the country's progress. The university is equally committed to playing a relevant role on the international stage, and to continue collaborating from academia towards solutions for the country's great problems. UNAM is a public, autonomous, and secular institution. More than 450 years old, it's the oldest university in America, along with the universities of Santo Domingo in the Dominican Republic, and Lima Perú. The university's principal tasks are teaching, research, and the diffusion of culture. Its community is made up of more than 360,000 students, academics, and administrative personnel. UNAM educates almost 300,000 students at the high school, bachelor, and graduate school levels. It is estimated that it provides some 25,000 classes daily. Moreover, it not only receives more students, but also offers more educational options than any institution in Mexico. This year alone, more than 82,000 students were admitted, 35,000 in high school, 37,000 at the bachelor level, and more than 10,000 at the postgraduate level. UNAM offers two different high school systems, the National Preparatory School and the College of Sciences and Humanities.
That is just the beginning. In brief, our, our mission is to teach, to conduct research, and to promote culture. We conduct almost half of all the research in Mexico currently. In Chicago, we have a Spanish department, professional English department, we provide professional development, that's training, professional services to corporations, as well as many other programs with government and private institutions. Through our Spanish department, we have a number of programs, specifically in Waukegan, we will be teaching specialized Spanish courses to educators. We identify that there is a gap between teachers and the public school systems in Lake County and the students. So we will be teaching the teachers how to bridge that communication gap, as well as cultural seminars. We will be teaching those through Educator Center at University Center. In terms of English as second language, we have a number of programs, specifically in Waukegan, we will be offering, in Lake County, through Educator's Center and University Center, we will be teaching English as second language for employees in the hospitality industry, English as second language for manufacturing, and English as second language for employees that work in landscape maintenance and golf course maintenance. We have a number of other professional development programs. Our intent is that in the future, continue to teach professional development courses in Spanish that College of Lake County does not teach, or if they teach, they teach in longer formats. Our goal is to teach the working parents, Latino working parents, actual professional courses that will help them improve their conditions at work, make them maybe earn more money. So there's professional culinary classes, server skills, kitchen skills, et cetera. Again, this will be the programs that we'll be offering in Lake County, Spanish for educators, cultural dynamics of Latino students and parents, and then ESL for landscaping and golf, ESL for manufacturing, and ESL for hospitality. But that's not everything. UNAM believes a strong responsibility in the development of the community. In addition to those programs, we also plan on doing health education and disease prevention. For example, we have programs on obesity that we are currently developing with the Council of Mexico. We will be providing several sessions in academic guidance for newcomers, understanding and navigating the education system in Lake County. And we will be providing... And we will be providing also understanding of the cultural dynamics of school environments in Lake County. This is providing Latino parents a deeper understanding of what it means to have their children in this educational environment. The National University of Mexico intends to be the voice of education for Lake County residents and Waukegan residents. Not only are we going to teach, but we want to be that popular university that people recognize from Mexico. Now being here, we want to answer the phone, and we want to tell people how to help their children stay in school and do well in school, and also how to help people learn more. So we want to work hand in hand with College of Lake County, University Center, and maybe provide a pipeline of students that can continue to study in whatever is already here. If anybody would like more information, we have our website. It is chicago.unam.mx. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Appreciate you coming in, and apologize for keeping you waiting as long as we did.
Thank you for having me.
Jumping around on the agenda, so I do apologize for that, but I think it was very interesting. We had a good discussion about this, what the school programs were, and I found it very intriguing, and I think it's something that will be a good start for them in Lake County. Yep, training for jobs, absolutely, that's what it's all about. So I was very, very impressed. And one of the other things that he spoke with just about momentarily was the idea of the health, and especially relating to obesity, which quite often goes hand in hand with diabetes. And there was another group that was at the Waukegan Public Library, not this weekend, but the weekend before, I believe, that actually was addressing that, and they're working with the Department of Health and other groups. So I've got some contact information for them, I'll get it to you, and I think maybe the two of you might be able to partner on some things.
Thank you.
So it's great, thank you again. We will go back to the agenda under Old Business, item eight. Item A is, we will be, a motion to approve the amended contract with SMG for the management of the Genesee Theater. Now, this is not a new contract, this is a placeholder contract to get us through to the end of, I believe, what's, July. Alderman Newsom, would you like to address this in any way?
Sure. I think all the Aldermen have a copy of the new contract. Noel worked very well with our corporation counsel on coming up with an amended contract for SMG. And I can just highlight a few of the things that they did. They cleaned up the language related to addressing staff, people, and general terminology, changed the contract terms, and they expired July 31, 2011. Renegotiated the management fee to $83,792, down from $103,697, a savings of $19,905. We completely eliminated the incentive fee, added budget and audit requirements, added a monthly narrative report of activity, and added a requirement to allow marketing presentations by the city or Waukegan Main Street. And I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Great, the ayes have it, thank you. The next item under Old Business is item B, which is the Ferguson Group contract renewal. I would like to have Noel Kishir, our intergovernmental liaison, come forward and give us just a brief overview as to where this is at this moment, before we move forward with the vote.
As we discussed briefly last month, Ferguson Group contract is fired on December 31. There are lobbyists in Washington. So we're preventing to be a renewal of that contract for another 12-month term. We've worked effectively with them, they were able to get us a recognition from Senator Durbin for against depression grant for $450,000. That is tied up in the federal budget issues that are ongoing, so we don't have that money at this point. One of the Aldermen asked last month how much Lake County was able to receive. They used the same lobbying firm as us. They got an allocation off through Senator Durbin for $353,000, maybe $425,000, so less than us. Our working relationship with Ferguson Group has been very good, they've been very responsive. They've recently, in the past three or four months, added a grant-seeking component to their offerings, and so they're able to help us more with grants than they were in the past. I think I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions among the Aldermen? Alderman Tempest.
How much is this? I didn't hear that.
Just the current renewal is the same amount as last year, $99,600.
$99,600. And did I hear that Lake County also uses them?
They do.
Now, we all pay taxes to Lake County, right? So why can't we just have Lake County take care of us? We're one of the largest cities in Lake County, why do we have to duplicate the efforts? They're surely working with Lake County, and that's my question, why?
Well, sir, I think that would probably be a question for the county board more than me, but my guess would be that the county has their own priorities that our president is saying is Waukegan.
I would hope they'd have our priorities, too.
I have a, may I, may I?
Alderman Rivera.
You know, when you mentioned, you know, grants, you know, it kind of bothers me a little bit because, you know, we turned down a grant a while ago during the discussions of the tax levy. And now, you know, when you're talking about these grants, you know, who's to say that we're going to be accepting these grants? I mean, you know, you know, these grants, like I said, they're only for a certain amount of years, and then once these grants are done with, you know, the council can come back and say, you know, we can't afford this because the fourth year is going to be, who's going to pay for it? So to use that as a, you know, because I have a problem with this. It's $100,000. You know, that could save, you know, a couple of jobs. You know, here we are looking to, you know, and I don't want to keep on harping on that because I'm not, definitely I'm not for, you know, minimizing our efforts in public safety in terms of laying off, especially in public safety, first responders. So, you know, this kind of, it bothers me, and I know you brought up, you know, the money for the gang crime unit, and I just, could you, I'm going to have a tough time voting on this for the lobbyists, I'll be honest with you. Especially when we're, you know, we don't have enough money, but yet we're going to dish out $100,000 for this, so.
Well, I'll try to address all of the aspects to the best I can. In terms of grants, one of the things that you have to consider anytime you apply for a grant is what the strings are. There's no such thing as free money, we all know that, whether that's our paychecks, or grant money, or, you know, a gift from your parents, there are strings attached to every dollar. So when you apply for grants, you have to look at what those strings are. Now, sometimes with grants, you don't know all of the strings until you get the paperwork awarding the grant, where you see all of the fine print. And then you have to make a choice whether it's worth obligating yourself to those things that go along with that money, you know, you have to weigh the risks. So sometimes, that's not the best choice to make, to accept the grant, even if you worked hard to be awarded. You know, hopefully, you have as much information as possible upfront, and can weigh that in determining whether you should spend the time and energy to apply for a grant in the first place. The money that was designated by Senator Durbin is more of an earmark than a traditional grant where you fill out an application. We all know all the conversations going on in Washington about earmarks and their budget in general. So, you know, whether any of that comes through in the end, we don't know at this point, but that's a Washington issue, that's not a non-performance under the contract issue. In terms of this versus, the contract renewal versus keeping employees or other budget issues, that's not for me to say, that's for you as the Aldermen to weigh where the value is. What I can tell you is that having a lobbying firm is another way to communicate with Washington. It's a way that we don't otherwise have, and it's something that has been effective, otherwise lobbying wouldn't be such a big thing. So it is an effective tool to get our message across, to get our priorities in front of our legislators, and fall in higher on the list than we would be if I was making a phone call, even if the mayor was making a phone call, or any of you. They have the relationships and the constant conversations, and they're present in Washington, and have the face-to-face communication. Now, whether it's worth that to you as legislators or not, I don't know, that's for you to weigh, not for me to weigh. I can tell you that I think that they have performed well under their prior contract.
You know, if I might, going to try to stay out of too much trouble here. Let's differentiate the two grants to start with. The first grant that we were awarded was the COPS grant. That came with a great deal of attachments to it, strings, that, and we explained it over and over again, but I'll go over it again. If we hired officers under that COPS grant, we were locked in to the amount of people we had working in the police department at that moment, for a period of three to four years. If we had to lay somebody off, the grant would have to have been paid back in its entirety. There was no way, given the results of the levy vote in December, that we would be able to guarantee, that we would be able to keep the Manning standards, numbers at where they were at the time the grant was sent to us. When the vote on the levy was taken, was the time for the body here to say to themselves, I want to support the people that work for the city of Waukegan and prevent layoffs. The numbers that came through because of the levy vote are, and I'm taking, I'm saying this without having dealt with these fee increases that we have before us, led to a $10 million deficit. Those numbers add up to a 30% reduction in our workforce, including police and fire. Nobody could be excluded from that. The only way that we could have preserved all the jobs as best we could have would have been to raise that levy. Nobody wanted to pay more taxes. I didn't want to pay any more taxes, but that was the best mechanism to make sure that that hardship was spread across the city as best we could. Now, we're faced with a series of what I call kind of ad hoc, jerry-rigged, trying to plug the hole, and we're still not going to be able to get to $10 million, so some people are still going to get laid off. We had the opportunity to protect our workforce, we decided not to take it, as a body. I vetoed it, I gave the body the opportunity to come back, reconsider, and vote on something different, some compromise number, it didn't happen. We are where we are right now because of a vote taken in December. This is going to be extremely difficult for all of us to get through if we don't find some way of plugging the hole. Because one moment, we're up here defending our policemen, our firemen, all these people who put their lives on the line just a couple of days ago to make sure that the people of the city of Waukegan were safe, but we had already abandoned them, but they still went out and did it anyway, knowing what we had done to them. It is not fair to say that you want to support their jobs, but as if to forget the actions that were taken in December. I tried, when I vetoed it, I had hoped so hard that there would be some middle ground found, and there wasn't. So we cannot say that we're not going to let people go because we don't have any choice, unless we plug that $10 million gap. I don't want to lay my police and fire off, I don't want to lay my code workers off, I don't want to lay my public employees, the city yards employees. After what I saw last week, and after what we all saw, this is a moment where we have to look at ourselves and say, are we going to fix a mistake that was made? Are we going to fix that error? I can't do it. I'm a referee up here. The Aldermen make that choice. Now, that, as I said, the first grant was one that was untenable, we couldn't take it. I don't believe, if I understand correctly, that the second grant was structured the same way.
That's my understanding as well, because it's more of an earmark appropriation rather than a grant.
This is a straight-up money reward.
Correct.
And it doesn't mean that we have, that we can't take it because we won't be able to keep everybody on the force. It doesn't mean that. This was straightforward, this is straightforward good money if we get it.
Point of order, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, Alderman.
My point of order is that the item before us is the Ferguson Group contract renewal for
Yes, sir.
Approximately $100,000. Either we want to go forward with the Ferguson Group and spend another $100,000, or we want to rely on the county trying to help us some. And also, we have a little story about Senator Kirk. Senator Kirk ran for Congress many years ago. The Waukegan Aldermen overwhelmingly supported him in his bid to become congressman. I don't believe he's forgot that, because he never would have made it without the Waukegan Aldermen getting behind him, one of the largest cities in the North Shore and his area. You know, I'm going to rely on Senator Kirk to help us get the funds. He owes Waukegan, and he's got to pay his political debt. We helped him, he needs to help his constituents in here. I don't need the Ferguson Group, let the Lake County spend all the money. We can't afford another $100,000, as you just said. You just telling us that we can't afford, we've got to come up with other money. And I think we should turn it down. But I know that Aldermen need him, is going to vote no, so I think it's best I hold it over so I have another vote next week to defeat it.
Actually, I think this was held over last week, wasn't it?
It was held over last week.
It was held over last week. Now, let me just say about this, you know, going to the county. The county has never in the past shared its lobbying services with other communities.
I'm not asking to share, I'm asking
I haven't seen it.
I'm not asking to share it, I'm just asking to look out for it.
If I could also address the issue of Congressman Kirk. Congressman Kirk ran on the platform of no earmarks.
Well, there's other ways to do it, Your Honor.
You have earmarks and you have appropriations. This one that we're looking at right now from the Ferguson Group was an earmark.
That may be so.
So it would have, Congressman Kirk has been very firm about it. And so, you know, I think we're taking a risk, but again, as I said, I believe that it's a worthwhile investment. I believe that if we spent $100,000 last year and we got $400,000 as a result of it, as I stated previously, the fact that we haven't gotten the money yet isn't their fault, it's held up in Congress. But it has been earmarked for the city of Waukegan. I'm not giving up on it, I think it'll still come. So, again, I think that we are going to leave ourselves out of the game to a certain extent. Cities like Rockford, Peoria, many other cities in the state of Illinois have lobbyists that work for them, not only at the federal level, but the state as well. And you can see the fruits of that if you look at the rewards that they've gotten, you know, over the last few years, they have received money. Heck, Rockford just got a big chunk of change to help with the Fiat Chrysler plant down there. I believe it was $8 million-plus dollars, because they had a lobbyist working on their behalf with local business, as well as government. But again, it's your call. It's your call. Alderman Conkin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mayor, Nicole, we applied for approximately
Mayor, Nicole, we applied for approximately $4.5 million in grants and funds. Was that all at the federal level, or was that partially federal, partially state?
It was all at the federal level. The Ferguson Group doesn't work at the state of Illinois level. They only work at the federal level. And last year, Senator Durbin was the only legislator taking requests. Then Congressman Kirk was not. This year, Senator Kirk is not taking requests. We believe that Congressman Dole will, and we know that Senator Durbin is expected to as well.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the one we're looking toward getting money for is for game unit activities?
Correct.
Through the police department? Were there any brick-and-mortar-type grants and monies that we looked for? And how did they work out? Obviously, they didn't work out.
Yeah. You know, Senator Durbin made his selection. I'm not sure what his criteria was. We submitted a variety of things. We met with all departments. I met with the Ferguson Group separately, and we met with the department heads to talk about their priorities. We went through basically the whole list of everything that was in last year's capital improvement plan, looked at all of the options. Specifically, in terms of brick-and-mortar, we had a bunch of engineering projects for bridges, Genesee Street, Grand Avenue, those types of things. I think that, and this is speculation on my part, but I think that, you know, police things are sexier in Washington, and so it's easier to try to allocate money toward those things. Bridges aren't really very exciting. So there were a variety of projects, yes.
So basically, we could put out as many of these grants as we want. It's still up to somebody else to decide which ones get approved or pushed through or not.
Yeah, they're not actually grant applications. We basically do about a two- to three-page write-up of each of the things we're trying to do, how it benefits the community, what the importance is, the reasons that we're looking for it, why it's a pressing issue now. And we present all of those to whichever senators and congressmen are taking requests and ask them to move our projects forward. They get the same kind of requests from all of the communities, many of the communities in their areas. And they select the ones that they want to support, sort of like putting your name on a bill to push it forward and sponsoring that. They choose which projects they want to sponsor.
So I... All right. Well, then what you're telling me basically is we basically aren't gonna get what we want. We're gonna get what somebody decides they want to support.
Well, we're gonna get something... If we get something, we'll get something that we have put forward. It's one of our projects. They don't make up what they're going to give to us.
It could be our 20th project, not our first project.
It could be our 20th project, yes.
Thank you.
But at least it will be something that made our list.
Okay.
Do we have any further comments? I would take a motion from Alderman Moiseo.
Mayor, I'll be honest with you. I can't support $100,000. I understand the game. I understand we need it, maybe next year. But to spend $100,000, and if it saves two people's jobs, it saves two people's jobs.
Do we have a motion to put it on the floor, so for a second? I'll ask again. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moiseo.
No.
Alderman Figueroa. This is to approve. Aye. Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
No.
Alderman Larson.
I voted for this originally, the Ferguson Group, with the hopes that, as Alderman Conken pointed out, that some of our infrastructure and needs would be addressed primarily. I'm voting no. Proof's in the pudding. The discretionary spending, the taxpayers have made it very clear to me that we have to limit that kind of thing, so I'm voting no.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you. We will go on to new business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approved bill payroll dated January 26, 2011, in the amount of $1,325,920.33. We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Item C, we have a Raffael application from Little Fort Lions Club. Take a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Item D, appoint Karen T. Carston to the Development Commission and Todd C. Benning to the Waukegan Port Authority. Everybody received their resumes, I believe, quite a while ago.
Yes.
I take a motion from Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Larson, to approve.
Mayor, would those candidates be available to stand up?
They are here, I believe, still. Karen and Todd, if you could please stand. Okay?
Thank you for showing up.
Great. Roll call, please.
Thank you for staying. Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye, and congratulations, Karen. She is also the new president of the NAACP as well, so congratulations.
Yep, congratulations. Thank you very much for your willingness to step up and serve. We appreciate that. Next, we have... Oh, by the way, everybody should know, these are non-paying appointed positions. So we double appreciate that. Thank you. Item E, we have the Advertising Transit Shelter Agreement, Addendum A. And did you do the work on this?
Yeah, we have.
Oh, okay. If you'd like to explain what it is that we're dealing with and answer any potential questions.
Okay. As you recall, back in November, we approved a new agreement for PACE for the transit shelter. They had changed their agreement, and so we had to approve the new agreement. They've now changed their policies and procedures. They work with Titan, which I think coordinates the advertising in these transit shelters. And Titan now has a choice. They allow the municipality option to whether to allow or not allow advertising for alcoholic beverages. And so they're asking us to approve this addendum indicating whether the city either wants to allow or does not want to allow such advertising.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Whether the city wants to what? What did you say? Whether the city wants to do what?
The city can choose to not allow advertising for alcoholic beverages in these shelters, or they can allow it. So there needs to be a decision among the council whether we want to allow such advertising or not allow it, and then that needs to be approved.
So what are we voting on now, tonight? What is the...
The addendum has a little place where you can circle, I think, may or may not, or...
Does or does not.
Does or does not allow advertising for alcoholic beverages.
But do we... I don't mean to interrupt, but I thought part of that agreement with PACE and those advertisements, that we get a... Don't we get a portion of those proceeds?
Yes.
All right. Now, by not, by saying no, and let's be clear, typically on those advertisements, the alcoholic aspects of advertising kind of dominates their advertisement on throughout the PACE bus and shelters and things like that. So by not allowing, does that then defer our... Does that say we're not gonna be getting those proceeds? Or will we reduce the amount of those proceeds we're going to be... So are we making that decision, too?
Right. By not allowing such advertising, we may affect the amount that we're receiving back.
Okay. So there's not a fixed cost on... I thought it was, it used to be a fixed cost on the amount of proceeds or monies that we get from those advertisements. Is there a fixed cost, or is it based on sales? We don't know, do we?
I don't recall the answer off the top of my head. I don't want to misstate.
Yeah. I remember that. I thought it was a fixed cost. Then anything exceeds that, then we get a portion of those. But if it's going to affect, you know, what comes to the city, then that needs to be in consideration when we make our decision. Just wanted to make that be clear.
Yeah, if we turn down the alcohol, then they have to find another advertiser.
Yeah, which you won't.
Which may not. Alderman Rivera.
Are cigarettes allowed to be advertised?
No. No cigarette advertising is allowed anywhere, I don't believe anymore. Not even magazines, television, on billboards.
No.
That's been outlawed by the federal government for a while. So do we have any other questions? Take a motion to approve by Alderman Cunningham.
What is the motion for?
The motion is to approve the agreement?
Yes, on the alcohol part of it.
Yes, to approve the agreement.
To approve the agreement.
All right. So move.
With the yes for the alcohol advertising.
Sure.
Do we have a motion by Alderman Cunningham? Do we have a second by Alderman Moiseo? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Aye. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Item F is an easement agreement between the city of Waukegan and the Lake County Forest Preserve District for the installation and use of a sanitary sewer manhole. Do we have anybody on stand? Amy, would you like to step up to the podium and give us a brief explanation as to what this deal is really all about?
This is in regards to the Shell Station on the corner of Sunset and Delaney. It's the, it's approximate location to the Lake County Forest Preserve. And they're hooking up to our sewer system. In years past, they had used a septic tank. And in order to do that and to cross the street correctly, there's a number of manholes. And engineers figured out, if you put it on one side, it's gonna be in the roadway. And then if York House was ever, yeah, if York House was ever expanded, we would have to pay to move it. So rather than the city take that risk on, we asked them to get an easement from the Lake County Forest Preserve. It's a two-foot-by-five-foot easement. It's literally the size of my foot to the Lake County Forest Preserve. And it's basically where the rim of the manhole cover enters the forest preserve land. They cannot grant it directly to this individual under their policies and procedures. They have to grant it to another unit of local government. The agreement before you specifies that the city of Waukegan is to pay certain fees associated with this. I did receive a check today, main payable to the city of Waukegan, from the individuals. The amount quoted was for the costs of this. I got a check for that amount. There's another amount mentioned in the contract, which is a $500 application fee or administrative fee or something like that. And they were trying to work with the forest preserve as far as either eliminating that or getting that rolled into the fee that they have to pay on their end for administration on their end. And I haven't heard the results of that. This all has been coming up very quickly. But I have, the grand, the greatest amount of money has been prepaid.
Thank you. You know, if some of you are not familiar with what this is, this is related to the issue of a septic system being placed on forest preserve property at the corner of York House and Delaney. And while I was a forest preserve commissioner, this fight went back and forth constantly. And it actually is kind of nice to have this in a position of being resolved.
Once and for all.
And once and for all. Now, I will say that the forest preserve is meeting tomorrow and that our vote tonight will allow them to approve it on their end and just basically put this matter to rest with some finality to it. So, do we have any questions?
No.
Motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna exercise a little privilege here and call for another two-minute break. And we'll return after a couple of minutes. All right. We move on to item 11, ordinances and resolutions. Item A has already been dealt with. Item B, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 21, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the City, Code of the City of Waukegan, to add a new section regarding use of mobile telephones while operating a motor vehicle. This would probably be best served by a Public Safety's chair making the motion to approve with a second by Alderman Moiseo.
Wait.
Point of order.
And with questions?
I'm not quite sure that, you know, these ordinances go through a, you know, a raft of different committee assignments. We have all sat down and talked to the staff about the advisability and the reasons why we're doing this. But shouldn't this emanate from the committee to the council rather than just going directly to the council?
Actually, it can work either way. It can come from the mayor's office, or it can come from committee. Because of the fact that this work for this was being done through my office, through the, through finance, through our legal department, we felt that it would be best to bring it directly to you. Everybody was given the opportunity multiple times to sit and review all of this with, two of their colleagues, with staff. Nobody was denied however much time they wanted, as long as they showed, and to ask all the questions that they wanted.
I understand that, but...
I'd like to, I'd like to move that ordinance B and number 11 be referred to the Police Committee, being it's a safety matter. I'd so move, Your Honor.
We have...
I'd so move, Your Honor.
And I, Alderman, I agree with you. Just to even put a motion out there to these, all these ordinance requests should be referred to their respective committees. I like to put it in that sense. And I know we've all had an oppo, mayor, yes, we've all had an opportunity, three at a time. But I think just to follow parliamentary order, I think it's smart to do the process correctly, so...
Alderman, it's your call to make. We tried to do this so that this could get before the body as a whole, have a public discussion about it.
I would amend my motion then, Your Honor, if I may make a motion to, on item number 11, from ordinances and resolutions, item B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, be referred to the proper committees.
I can't recognize that motion. That's out of order. You need to deal with each one individually.
Well, fine. I'll do it that way then.
Thank you, Alderman.
That's fine, Your Honor.
Take a motion on item B.
Item B, my motion, Your Honor, is to, item B is to refer item B ordinance to many Chapter 21, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, City Code of the City of Waukegan, to add a new section regarding use of mobile telephone or operating motor vehicle, referred to the Police Committee. I'd so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call.
Voice vote.
I'm sorry.
Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to veto this.
I'd like to... You're gonna veto?
I'm vetoing it. So you will need a motion to override my veto by two-thirds.
So, so move.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Tempest, we have a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
All right. Is it a "aye" to veto or "nay"?
To override. It's just to veto.
It's to override.
"Aye" is to override?
Yes.
Is this necessary?
Yes, it is.
Is your ball? Aye. Alderman Conken. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It is moved into, which committee did you request?
Public Safety.
Public Safety. I will say that in two weeks, we will bring a very similar ordinance to this with some slight changes to it, so that it is a brand-new piece of legislation. And again, we'll see where that goes in two weeks. So right now, this item B before us will be remanded over to Public Safety, where Alderman Larson and his committee will review it and take appropriate action. We now go to item C, amending Chapter 10 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for residential collection of garbage, refuse, yard waste, and recyclable materials. I believe this would be a... I believe this would be a...
I move that this should go into Public Works.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera to move to Public Works. Do we have a second? A motion by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will veto that item. And so we will hold it here, or if you override the veto, then it will go to committee.
All right, your honor?
Yes, sir, Alderman.
Well, then, if, it sounds like you're ready to veto everything. We can omnibus, what is, how you pronounce it? Omnibus. All of these ordinance into committee and then we, and then we can do it that way. I move that we omnibus?
But you can't, because they're, they're going to separate committees. So they have to be identified as to which committee they're going to.
Yeah, but, but they're, they're going to committee, period.
Well, but which one?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's...
Maybe which one?
Yeah, identify the ones.
Right now, you have before you a veto.
Call for, call for a question on the veto, please.
We have a motion by Alderman Moisio. Do we have a second? It should be to override.
Override the veto.
I'd so move.
Motion, seconded by Alderman Newsom to override the veto. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin. Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Okay, it's overridden. We are in item D. Item D, ordinance, amending Chapter 10 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for residential collection of garbage, refuse, yard waste, and recyclable materials to add a charge for curbside leaf and brush pickup. I believe Alderman Rivera, this would be your committee. Motion by Alderman Rivera?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Yes, I'd like to discuss it, if I may.
Oh, yes, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you. You know, there's some other communities that have a tag sometimes instead of charging each individual fam. Some people have a way of recycling their yard waste to make soil out of it and digging it into the soil. And I, I think that needs to take time to discuss.
Exactly.
And I hate to see the tone that's being done here by our mayor and wanting to veto of him. That is not a, and you're losing 9-0 every time.
That's okay.
You, that's, no, it's not okay, mayor, it's not okay. Tried to, you know, push this, we're trying to get, make sure everything's right. There's a lot of ordinances put before us all at one time. I think discussion in committee is good. And I think you're taking the wrong approach in your actions instead of letting it go to committee, let it come through the regular source instead of getting this hostility built up between your council, which is all for the city, and your council. Your council is to help guide you for a better Waukegan. And I hope that that's what we would be doing. So, I made my remarks.
If I can make... Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Moisio.
Yeah, I mean, I had my chance to go over this with Tina and Anne and a lot of these, I'm for in some ways. But I want to digest it, I want to talk to the other Alderman. I want to make sure that I've dotted all the ayes and crossed all the t's on it. I've met, I know we had, we had an opportunity to meet with them and discuss it, I understand that. Like I said, some of these I'm for, some of these I'm for with some tweaking, some of them I'm not for. But to jam it down my throat in this manner, I just, I want, I want to digest it a little bit, that's all. That's all I'm asking for, is to be able to digest it on some of them. That's all I'm asking for. And a little communication between the other Alderman up here to make sure that I've looked at everything and they've looked at everything, to discuss and communicate, that's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Yes, Alderman Rivera.
And, you know, one thing that we forgot here, what about the people, the taxpayers? You know, they want an explanation as well. That's why we have these committees. Unfortunately, you know, when we have these committees on opposite Mondays, nobody's here. You know, this can give an opportunity to hear what we have to say and the reasons why we're doing these things. Sure, we've had our meetings, you know, of course we have. But, and also, I just don't agree with vetoing, you're vetoing parliamentary order, parliamentary procedure. I, I don't understand that. I mean, I know there's situations, there's times where, there's a time that you can pick a fight or whatever it may be, but I think this is ridiculous, vetoing, you know, parliamentary order. And, but this also, remember, this gives an opportunity to the taxpayers of this community to hear what we have to say in committee in regards to these issues.
Alderman, if I might respond to that? The opportunity was here tonight. Every discussion, every word you wanted to say about these items could have been said tonight. In fact, we give the public more time to weigh in by holding these a week before and having these things on agenda in well in advance. Where the old system had the committee meeting the night of the, of the city council meeting, you didn't get a chance to say anything. It was going up for a vote. We tried to find time for people to weigh in. That was the goal. Alderman Cunningham.
Your, um... My purpose for holding this over is, is to get a better understanding of all of these. And, you know, I, I understand what you must do from an administrative standpoint, trying to fill these gaps with certain things, like we have some great ideas. This is not a, a fight against you or you against us. But, you know, in the past, as you've recognized, you know, we've made decisions too fast. Then we have to retract those decisions. You know, when we're talking about dollars coming out of taxpayers' pocket immediately once some of these are enacted, then we have to be able to explain this as an Alderman to our constituency. If I don't understand it and I'm closest to this, then how am I to then communicate that to people who have no idea what our process is? So, you know, I'm hoping that we forget about this veto thing and just move on to these committees, expedite them. I think that the chairmen of all these committees do a pretty good job. If we need to meet so we can get them back on here, so we can get these dollars in here to make sure we have, you know, the shortfall that you're looking for, we can do that. But, you know, this process here creates an adversary-type of deal. And that's not what I'm trying to do with you or the rest of my colleagues. So, you know, let's move, we had, I had some great conversations with Anne, with Tina, and with the rest of your staff, great conversations. I think we, we all came out of it with some things. Me personally, I thought we were going to discuss these again, to be honest. I thought we were going to have more discussion as to when, what we're going to do, how we're going to do, dollar amounts we're going to do with that, and how we're going to implement this. But to, to try to get this done tonight, particularly of all the, all the orders that you have here, that is, that's difficult within itself for you to try to implement, let alone for us to try to say yea and nay, then move on. And one thing I will not do, as I did with this toe, this, this, what is it, not the toe ordinance, I want to make sure we get this right, but this public safety ordinance, I thought that was rushed to judgment. It came back to bite us. We're doing some things to try to correct it. We don't want to continue to repeat that process. So I'm asking you, mayor, withdraw all this veto, let us get it in there, do what we all do best, and then move forward. That's my request tonight. If not, then I'm ready to go with, kind of went right real quick and assign what goes to what committee and do it that way. But I can't, I don't think no one wants to move forward with something that is a little foggy to us right now. Then you have to communicate that to people who are really not going to be, you know, that's acceptable and money coming out of their pocket right now. So I think if you want to implement this, you know, part of your budgetary item, correct? If I'm not mistaken?
We don't know when this will start.
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it's understood to the Alderman when all of these are going to take effect. Some of them, we're going to have to wait till we get it out to the public, like the telephone. Then some of the other ones to your water bill. So we don't know when it's going to be enacted. Could it be two months, could it be three months? Is it going to be enacted tonight or whenever we vote on it? That hasn't really been given to us. And furthermore, some of the fees or that are in there, the Alderman haven't had a chance to even discuss whether we want to keep that fee that has been given to us or do we want to decrease it, do we want to add to it? Yeah, we had a meeting, three Alderman at a time, but it did not come through a committee where we could discuss it and find out exactly what we wanted to do. And I think that's the way we've always done.
Thank you. The opportunity is here tonight to take these in whatever pace you want to take them. You could have taken the first item, spent a half an hour, 45 minutes discussing it, talking back and forth about the numbers, asking questions of Joan, asking questions among yourselves, and trying to come to some decision that was based on information that you were given in meetings previously. For everybody that came and was able to attend the meetings, you had the chance. What I'm hoping to do was to be able to get this stuff started tonight, even if we didn't finish it. If you wanted to hold some over for the next meeting, that would have been fine. Here's my fear, let me just be really obvious as to why I'm concerned and why I am vetoing these things. They will go into committee and they will languish there. There will not be swift action on these items. We have to set our budget. We're starting that now. We need to know how much money we're going to be able to work with. Some of these items can't be enacted overnight. Some of them, like a liquor and sale, food sales tax, takes 90 to 120 days to enact. Some of them are not as complex. Some of them are just simply changing numbers, going on your water bills. So the goal was to begin the process tonight in the public, to have this discussion among all of ourselves as opposed to one committee, then recommending that to the entire body after coming out of one committee. That was the goal. We don't have forever to get these things done. Alderman Moisio.
Mayor, I understand the need for, to get this done. Could we, could we have special committee meetings of these during the week to just discuss these to get them out? Just to get them out, just to bring them to committee, discuss them and get them out of committee quickly and bring them to maybe the next council meeting and a council meeting after that. I understand the need to get the budget done. We all understand that pressure. We all understand that. But again, I think everybody is sitting up here, we want to make sure, like I, like I told you, some of these I'm ready, I'd be, I'd be ready to vote on right now. Some of them I'm not comfortable with. I want to flush out the fees, I want to flush out the repercussions of it, I want to see if that's really what we, what we want to do. But if we need to bring them to committee, if that's what the other Alderman want to do, can we have a special committee, a committee meeting? Public Safety would probably be, Public Works. I don't know what some of the other ones might go into. Could we have a special meeting next week and have it, and bring them to the next council meeting?
And I'm not opposed to that. Here's my concern though, Alderman. And that would be fine if we knew that we could do them in a fashion that would be speedy and resolute and get it on the agenda for the next city council meeting. My concern is that that won't happen. My fear is that it will go into committee and be trapped. And it will be held for a period of time that will then make our, being able to set our budget, know how much money we have coming in, very difficult. And, you know, as it is right now, as it stands at this moment, given the vote on the levy, we know we're probably going to be down one-third of our workforce. We have to prepare for that, you can't prepare for that overnight. So it's something that we, you know, my concern is making sure that this gets done in a fashion that allows us the proper time to plan and to know what resources we have.
Tina, in my meeting with Tina, I saw the anguish on her face about how she had to know about this. And she made that clear to me. She said, Greg, I need to know on some of these pretty soon. I mean, she made that pretty clear. And, and, because it makes her job, it makes all of our jobs harder if we languish it and we drag it out. I can't speak for anybody else. I don't want to drag it out any longer than it has to be. But tonight, I'm not ready to vote on all of these tonight, I'm just not ready. Some of them, yes, a lot of them, no. And that's just, that's just this Alderman.
That's a good point. You know, Alderman, just one moment. You know, Corporation Council mentioned something that I was just thinking about as well, which is we can schedule a special call committee of the whole meeting where we can sit up here as, in its entirety, and we're not going to take action on anything at that meeting. Simply discuss. Do it as an entire body in front of the public to be televised so that people can hear the discussion. And then we can move it forward. Does anybody have a disagreement with that? Committee of the whole is a standard procedure for getting a body politic together to discuss agenda items but not taking action on them. And to have that discussion open to the public and broadcast.
Your honor, you know, it, it sounds like, it sounds like to me, there, there sounds like some mistrust there. I want to be very clear with you. The, the chairmans, Public Safety, Public Works, Finance, Genesee Theater, Insurance, have been doing this for a while. If there is a need to get them out and get them done, those chairmans can do that. That's what they're charged for. If we, I'd rather have a special council meeting to, to approve, you know, things that we've gone on versus have a committee of the whole. That means you're going to tie up everyone for four or five hours, when you can do this probably within 45 minutes to an hour within those various committees, having the staff there to answer the question that we have. I mean, give those to those chairmans, that's what they do. They're good at this. We don't, we don't need to tie up an entire council and pu, I, I, I don't, from, from an efficiency standpoint, I don't think that's necessary. Trust those chairman. We've trusted them with certain things of this city and trust them now. I don't, I don't like that tone, your honor. It sounds like you, you're not trusting us to come out to, to work on the better half of the city of Waukegan, and that I disagree with. I've been able to work with everybody up here for the last four years. And I understand their commitment is, is similar to yours, move the city forward. Trust us to do that. Now, if you can't do that, your honor, then we must move forward with putting this back in committee and doing what we think is best. I shouldn't say what we, what I think is best.
We are both, I think, at this point, doing what we both think is best.
Well...
Honestly, sir.
And I agree with you.
My concern is that we all had so much time, weeks, to discuss this, ask questions. You could ask questions among each other to get to a point of where we could bring this before the body tonight. And again, as I said, I never really thought we'd get through the whole thing. I figured at some point, some of this would be carried over to the next meeting.
Well, that's it.
But our concern, my concern is, is being able to plan appropriately, to know where we're headed, to know what we're going to have as a workforce, how much resources we're going to have. But I understand, look...
You don't think it'll be ready for the next meeting?
I'm concerned that it may not.
I think it will.
I will, I mean, you've got the trust, your honor.
Could I ask, could I ask the chairman of the committees if you would be willing to, next Monday and the following Tuesday, to call your groups together? You have a regular scheduled committee meeting? Would you be, those other chairman be willing to meet the following day?
I, your honor, I'm willing to follow the rules as they're supposed to be, so...
We are following them, Alderman.
I don't have a problem, we'll meet, special meeting, we'll get it done, that's not a problem.
You'd be willing to do that?
Mayor, you're just missing the whole point here. It's just, we got to work together. This is like some sort of an ego trip.
No, sir, it is not an ego trip.
Yes, it is, mayor, yes, it is.
Alderman, it is not.
Yes, it is.
No, sir, it's not.
Yes, it is.
You know what it is?
We're trying to work together here.
Alderman?
Excuse me, mayor.
No, sir, I have the ta, I have the mic right now, sir.
I can't just tell by your point of order.
Please. Point of order yourself, Alderman, please.
Point of order, please.
Please, Alderman.
We're on the agenda, are we not?
I'm trying to answer, Alderman Rivera.
Well, we, we go on and on and you get off on the record.
Alderman, this is not an ego trip. What you see is reflected of a true fear of being able...
By whom?
Being able, well, myself, staff, other members, of trying to make sure that we have these things approved in enough time that we can plug them in for the budget.
And all I'm asking is that we follow parliamentary rule.
But I ask, and I have no, if you, if you, if you want to meet next week, Monday and Tuesday, that would be great.
And we always have special, uh, city council meetings. They're all special, that's not a problem.
Do you think we'll be able to get these out of the individual? Do you think we'll be able to get these out of the individual committees?
Yeah, I don't see no problem.
Alderman Larson.
Mayor, I'll say this to you, that I will contact my Public Safety Committee members tomorrow, and we will agree to a time to set up a committee meeting.
Will you be able to move it out of committee, do you think?
That depends on what the committee finds and the discussion needed.
Right.
Public, I'd like to say Public Works meets Monday and Finance anyway.
Right.
So, it'll be ready before the next council meeting.
Put it on the agenda. You know, let's put them in, let's move, let's put them into committee right now. And Mayor, from the Alderman's standpoint, I've kind of went through and found out what go, I think what goes into what committee. Looking at Item D, Item D and Item G, correction, Item H should be in the Public Works Committee, according to what you have here.
Yeah.
Alderman, could I ask you, please, for a moment? Let's do this, then.
Okay.
Let's go through each one alphabetically.
Okay.
And if I'm going to ask for a motion, then if one of the aldermen wishes to move to have it referred to committee, then you would second it, and that's fine. I will no longer veto it. So move.
Thank you. Let's talk about D.
Okay, let's start with D. We have an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for residential collection of garbage, refuse, yard waste, recyclable materials to add a charge for curbside leaf and brush pickup. We have a motion by Alderman Rivera.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Cunningham.
I move to put it in committee.
We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham to refer back to which committee?
Public Works.
To Public Works Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Rivera.
You'll need a second.
Roll call, vote, please.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Item E, ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding rates for parking in certain municipal parking lots and garages. I believe that would be judiciary?
Well, Finance meets.
I had it Public Safety.
Finance?
Finance.
Finance?
Okay. And a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
To refer to Finance Committee.
Finance Committee.
That was, actually, we just voted and approved it, but we'll refer that to Finance Committee. Item F, ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan to add a fee for administration of bail and/or bond in the Waukegan Police Department. A motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
To refer to which committee?
Finance.
To refer to Finance. Okay?
Collection of fees.
Public Safety.
Public Safety? Okay.
Yeah, that should be Public Safety, number F.
Public Safety. All right.
Okay, Public Safety.
Make sure we get it right.
Public, number F should be Public Safety.
Correct.
Item G, ordinance amending Chapter 9 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan, fire prevention and protection, to clarify language regarding collection of fees. We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
I move to put that in Public Safety, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Cunningham to turn to Public Safety, excuse me, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item H, amending Chapter 24 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan...
So move.
Regarding certain fees for water and sewer services.
So move.
This would be Finance, a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera.
Public Works.
Is that funny?
That should be Public Works Committee, H.
Yeah, water and sewers.
Yeah, Public Works, Public Works.
It's fees.
Public Works.
It's fees.
Public Works, yes, Public Works.
So, we have a motion to refer to Public Works Committee?
Yes.
By Alderman Cunningham?
Yes.
Seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, J, K, N.
Eyes have it. Ordinance number I, amending Chapter 20 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan to add new Article 10 Food and Beverage Tax. I believe that would be Finance. A motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Do we have a motion to refer to Finance Committee?
So move.
A motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Item J, ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan...
Some of judiciary.
Regarding fees for building and other related permits, contractor registration, and the like. We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham.
Move to put Item J in...
Do we have a motion to refer to committee?
Yeah, judiciary.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham to refer to judiciary. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Let's see.
L.
Do we do... K. We had K.
We're on K. Ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan, licenses and miscellaneous business regulations consolidating certain categories of businesses under the general business license, and increasing certain fees for business licenses. That would be under judiciary.
Judiciary.
Take a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Larson. Do we have a motion to refer to judiciary committee?
So move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Item L, ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the City Code of the City of Waukegan regarding certain fees for licensing and inspection of rental properties. Do we have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Moiseo? Do we have a motion to refer to judiciary committee by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Tell your staff to get a cot.
Okay, next up is Alderman's comment time. Oh, yes, the Corporation Council would like to address.
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank Alderman Newsom for referring an address in her ward to my office on Pine Street. Went by it, and it's a wide-open building that's just been that way for some time, and we're going to follow up on it. Again, just wanted to use that occasion to invite all of you, any addresses whatsoever in your wards that need prompt attention, please, please call them in to me. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, I, I know all you Packer fans are happy. But, anyway, I want to say thank you, I know we say thank you to our, to our Public Works Department and Police and Fire. And you know what? The Public Works Department, or those who, including Public Works, I don't know why they're not included, part of the first responders, because if you take a look at some of the things that they do, they work right along with your Public Safety and your Fire, so, you know, kudos go to all of them. But, I want to extend a special thank you to, and I think this is going to go out to all the citizens of this city. You were very patient, you were understanding, you kind of, you knew what we, what the challenges were, and you kind of, I understand you were very frustrated at certain times, but they, the citizens of Waukegan really, really were patient as to what was going on. I think the call, they went out to remove all the cars, I saw a lot more cars off the street this time, and for those who didn't, well, you knew what was going on. But, you know, the people on Lake Court, you know, we understand what was going on. We want to, I appreciate you for doing that, and just everyone throughout the entire city, and I'm specifically saying, the First Waters, thank you for being patient with us. I think your patience really helped us get through this particular situation, so, kudos to, you know, the citizens of Waukegan who worked with us through this, just some mon amour, and I just cannot believe we got that much snowfall. So, that's my only comments tonight, and that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Conken?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the citizens of Waukegan, just like Alderman Cunningham alluded to, they were very patient. I mean, the snow was tough. We had, some of our snowplows getting stuck, so I think that our Public Works Department did an excellent job. I also like to thank ComEd. I personally had a power outage down in my neighborhood. My power was out for approximately twenty hours, and I was actually very happy that it only was twenty hours. I thought it was going to be a lot longer with the size of the snowdrifts. And, speaking of snowdrifts, please, everybody, with a lot of roads and a lot of sidewalks still filled in, you're going to have people and kids, especially around the time schools start and schools let out, please keep an eye on them. The kids will be in the streets walking, and they'll probably be walking as close to the banks as they can, but the roads are awful narrow, so please drive carefully and be aware of pedestrians in the street, and they're going to be there. So, take care, and let's be safe. I'm done. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo?
I'd also echo, I'm trying to find a phone over here for another announcement, but I'd like to echo the efforts of Public Works that were monumental. I only got two phone calls about snow removal, believe it or not, and one was actually from a home care nurse for a gentleman that was homebound, that she needed to get into, and I was fortunate enough to know somebody had a plow, and I called him, and he went over there and plowed out the driveway so that the home care nurse could get in. So, that's citizens coming together and helping each other out. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, the Booster Club is having an auction on March the 5th, and if you'd like to donate something, it's for the high school athletic department, you can get ahold of Kurt Day, and his number is 847-878-9297. That's for the people watching it on TV. He wanted me to pass that message along. That's it.
Alderman Figueroa?
Yeah, it's, I've got very few phone calls on the, on the thing with the big snowfall. So, I think this is my third snowfall this big in Waukegan, 1967. There was one when I was a kid, it was, the snow was piled up high in the middle of the street, and I remember that. But, I hadn't really noticed in the past how much effect, people who have alleys, that's affecting. Of course, the streets are first priority, and the alleys are second priority. And there's, you have to understand that alleys are, there's no place to put the snow. It's, you're shelter, there's no place to put the snow, like when you're on the street, put it up on the curb. And the alleys are much different, and I got people complaining that, that the snow was being pushed up against their houses, so it's, it's, you have to be patient, and Public Works did a fantastic job. Streets were first, and the alleys were second. But, again, there's no place to put the snow in the alleys, just pushing it all the way to the end and, and hoping there's an empty lot there for them to push the snow up on. So, once again, great job, Public Works, and I'm going to be talking this when this thing clears a little bit, about what to do with alleys, because there's no easy answer for that. Just got an irate call tonight. They had, I had asked them to clean the alley, and they pushed all the snow on the areas that they had cleaned already, so, but anyway, it was just one irate phone call for all of the, from the whole ward. Once again, kudos to the work that Public Works has done.
Alderman Newsom?
I'd like to say kudos to Public Works as well. I did receive a few phone calls on Wednesday, Thursday, and then to Mr. Hagerty this morning. There were a couple of alleys in my ward that were not done, and I gave him a call, and I appreciated it. He came out, I waited there till he got there, and he had the guys come right over and take them through three streets, so I want to say kudos to them. Thank you very much. That's all.
Alderman Tempest?
Thank you. First, again, I guess I should join the group, and I made a mistake and tell the mayor that they did a good job, and he jumped and yelled, "What do you mean a good job? That was an excellent job." And he was absolutely right. The city snowplow, and they did an excellent job for the conditions that they were working under, and I was corrected there. Also, the Fire Department and the Police Department worked together during the storm. And I think about fire hydrants right away. I would encourage everybody in front of your home to make sure, we can't clear every fire hydrant, but we used to have a little program. My neighbor, Sid, he's gone now, but he used to adopt that fire hydrant in the corner, and I always made sure it was kept clear. And I think we need to get a little more community spirit, and have people adopt the fire hydrant in front of their house and kind of make sure it's clear. Years ago, we got that flag we put on top, that kind of helps see it a little better, and those are very helpful, too. Then I'm concerned about the snow at the intersections. Not much we can do about it, but it's dangerous. The snowfall back, when was it? In the seventies, we had that? We were driving through tunnels. Bob Johnson was Public Works Director at the time, and we were driving through tunnels as he, and the way you could see a car coming, back then, we had antennas on the car, and you could put a little flag up on the antenna, and you could see them on the way. So, but we don't have those now, so you have to be extra careful if you go to those intersections. Then, many people were, did not get to work. And what a day that was, for learning to know who their neighbor was, for getting out there, not necessarily waiting for the city, because the city wasn't coming today. And they're in the alleys with their snow blowers, and I saw one alley, eight different people out there clearing the alley with their snow blowers and shovels, and the teamwork was really great to see, people pulling together for each other to help solve a problem that necessarily the city couldn't get to right away. And so, and then the last thing I probably want to talk about is the morale of many citizens in our community. We have still people losing their homes, but you know, I kind of feel the economy is turning around, and I'm very hopeful that it is turning around. And the last thing, we had a gentleman during time, no confidence in my police chief. I want to tell people, I have the utmost confidence in my chief of police. He's got a job to do, he's got limitations, what he can do economically. I'd ask him to get behind him, because he's a fine, fine chief and a fine, fine career man, and he wants the same thing for his men that he has, and the same goes for Chief Young also. With that, Your Honor, I've been here a long time, but I've never heard of vetoing a motion when you refer something to a committee. I know you're under the gun economically, I know that's probably why your frustrations are, but I think in the long run, it's going to come out better. I think committees will move very fast on this for you, and we'll get it out there in a good form, but at least we have more time to discuss it. Instead of all this at one time, I'm sure the committees won't disappoint you and get it back to you immediately. Thank you very much.
Alderman Larson?
I want to echo that about the chief. I think, I hope all of them, I want to echo, you're right, Alderman Tempest. I have the utmost confidence, Danny Grayhouse, the chief of, period. I hope everybody does.
Well, if I may continue. I, I think it's not right for a man to come up in a public meeting and make that kind of statement. I just think it's not the place, nor is it good.
I agree.
Because they work their tails off, day and night, working for the department, if they only knew how they stood up for them so many, many times, trying to help. And we have a great police department, we have a great fire department, we really do. They both hold this town together. We have one of the finest fire departments, paramedic service, medical service than anywhere in the county. Our police department ranks top in the state, as our fire department does. We have a lot to be proud of in Waukegan, and we're turning the corner. We're turning the corner. the corner, things are getting better, and we're staying positive. But I know the snow's here, and you know, it is kind of time to get those Christmas decorations down. Bye-bye, thank you.
Alderman Larson?
Uh, thank you. There was some statistics in the newspaper regarding the amount of streets, alleys, cul-de-sacs that Waukegan has to take care of with their Public Works when a snow hits like it hit this time. I think the number was 180 cul-de-sacs, I think 150 of them are in the 8th Ward, and kudos to, kudos to Tom Haggerty and his plow jockeys for getting in there, trying to cut around those difficult curves in some instances, and then going back later and getting the unloaders in there to move the, the snow that may have blocked a driveway or two, it's just impossible not to do it a little bit, and they did a great job. Same with the Fire Department, Chief Young's got his guys going out and trying to get the fire hydrants dug out, and when you're dealing with four or five foot of packed-in snow, it takes a good half hour to an hour to, to do that, so keep up the good work, chiefs. And I also want to echo, as Public Safety Committee Chairman for the last few years, we have always tried to promote from within. The mayor made a choice as to who the chiefs would be when those openings happened. Nothing that I'm aware of has, by their function as chiefs, has done anything other than bring credit to our police and fire departments, so I also want to publicly support them and ask that the troops rally behind them during these tough times. I mean, it's easy when things are good, it's not so easy when things aren't good, as we all realize. And last but not least, I thought it was interesting, Duncan Henderson from the Port District was here about, last meeting, talking about the plans for expansion of his harbor, and as is my habit, I reach out to people who are involved in the harbor, Hank Bogdol is here tonight, and ask their opinion on the plan presented to us, and I thought it was curious, well, informative, Hank was very forthright with his thoughts on that, and with the indulgence of my fellow Alderman, I'd like Hank to come up here and talk about the plan for the rehabilitation and expansion of our harbor from the board perspective, because we didn't hear that when Duncan was here.
I missed the January 18th meeting, is that when it was? I didn't know about it, and that's not the administration's fault, I should have been told down at the Port District, for some reason I, I missed it. But anyway, Rick Larson had called me the next day after your meeting, or a couple days after, and he asked me if I knew about the island concept that the district was pushing. I said I did, and I, I said the island, the CDF concept is a great thing. Duncan Henderson had thought up the idea, and we all thought it was a great idea. I brought up from the March 17th meeting, that's when he introduced it, our minutes, I may just say briefly here, Mr. Henderson, two months ago, spoke about the proposed concept for the EPA to move dredged material from the North Harbor cleanup to a new in-lake containment cell at the southeast corner of South Marina. Expenses were questioned, but just to cut this short, it's a great idea in this regard. It would save a lot of time moving the dredged material to that concept, that island, CDF. It would save not only money, but it would enable the City of Waukegan to do what it pleased with the OMC property it has acquired, and that wouldn't have the contamination of the PCBs on it. You know, through the years, I can recall when Bill Morris was mayor, and we had an environmental committee, and I was elected chairman of it, and Larry, Alderman Tempest was elected liaison, or appointed from the council. We worked real hard at that time, and we both got accommodation from the mayor, I was just looking at it the other night. But anyway, that island is a great thing, and I commend Duncan Henderson for the idea. But after we talked, you told me about the floating docks, that's a great thing also, but I didn't have this, and I, I got it after we talked, and I looked through it and read it, and I was a little worried about the floating docks you spoke to me about, and I thought we were talking maybe about the ones to the north of the current South Marina, but then I looked at this here diagram, and our two water lines from the city run out there, and I see there's a breakwater here. Now, that breakwater, this was, I looked on here, this was made up in January 2010, so maybe it's an old one that Duncan just submitted. But I have fears that if we build over those water lines, that could be a catastrophe looming. Our water is precious, we brag about it, a lot of communities like to have it, they don't have it, and the lines, I understand they have joints that may be open a little bit. I spoke at that, that meeting, and talked about not extending the marina to the east, that we should look at the south end of the South Pier, there's plenty of water there, and, there, would you help me with this? This is the map of that area, this is the current marina. Now, on this plan, a breakwater would come here, in the island here, well, all that could be changed, I'm not, not an architect, but any draftsman could change that, and I encourage you to ask that that be done, so we wouldn't have to build a new marina here, over those two lines. Even though they're floating docks, I imagine they would have to be anchored to the floor of the lake, and that would create some dangers, I would think, and we could go over this way instead of this way, and the vault is right here, that round tank, you've probably all seen it from time to time, that's where these lines feed into, and then it crossed into the water plant, hopefully things.
So Hank, to sum it up, this plan that we were presented was not presented to your board?
Well, it was presented before.
Okay.
But when it was presented again, I had fears, and I don't know, it's, it's just not a good idea in my book. Now let me say this, down at the board, we could vote until we're blue in the face not to let that happen, but it's your water lines, and if you let it happen, there's nothing we could do. But if you don't let it happen, you could do the suggestion of making it to the south, it has to be relooked at, but the, but the island itself, I think is a wonderful, wonderful idea. There are some other issues that involve the city, but in all due respects, I think I have to take it up with the Port District at our next meeting, and then I'll report back to the city.
Thank you, Hank.
Any other questions?
Thanks a lot.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the end for me.
Alderman Rivera?
Thank you. First of all, I also want to give my confidence to, support of confidence to Chief Yancey, I, I was talking to him a little earlier, and I told him, I said, "Listen, I'd hate to be you, you know, I know you're in a tough situation, but at the same time, I understand not only the, you know, the employees of the, the Police Department, our police officers, but everyone in the City of Waukegan that works for the city." You know, when, when you're just constantly hearing, you know, gloom and doom and the layoffs, and, you know, when that's constantly, when you're hearing that, what are you going to expect? What kind of reaction are you going to expect? You know, this is tough to swallow, this is a tough pill to swallow for these people. You know, there's going to be some kind of reaction, and unfortunately, we heard a little bit of that tonight. So I want to say to you all, the employees, you know what, we're going to try our best, you know, not to see a third people laid off, I mean, just these numbers are unbelievable, we're already, you know, in bones already, but, you know, hang in there, you know, I know the economy's going to get better, you know, I have the full confidence that the economy will get better, and just hang in there, but chief, you know, you, keep on doing the great work. Also, I want to give my thanks to Public Works, not only Public Works, police and fire. First of all, Tom Haggerty and his staff, there was anticipation, all right? You know, decisions were made a couple of days prior to the storm coming in, by making phone calls. That's why it's so important to develop relationships and partnering with contractors, with people that have the heavy equipment that we need, that possibly we would have needed, and we did. That's anticipation. You don't make decisions on the same day. But because Tom had that vision, obviously with the technology that we have, radar, everyone knew that this was going to be bad. He made the proper decisions to get the, the equipment that we needed, such as the payloaders, the grader with the blade that we had to use out there in River Road, all the payloaders that we needed to open up these cul-de-sacs. You know, after when he made his calls, guess what? Gurney, all these other, other governments were making these phone calls to these contractors, but guess what? We already had ours in line. So, great call, great anticipation, and I commend Tom Haggerty. Second of all, the police department, you know, there were situations now, not only was this a removal, a snow removal operation, but it also became rescue missions as well. I want to commend the, the police department and radio dispatch for helping out when we had three people that were stranded down there in the train station. You know, it was pretty dangerous, people could have died, but working along with our police and fire, we were able to get these people back home safe. So everyone did a terrific job, and I appreciate that very much. Third, I also had the honor of attending the, honoring the African Americans who serve and protect, people like the Honorable George Bridges, the Chief of Police, Ernest Fisher, you know, these people, they paved the way for African Americans that were well qualified, an opportunity to serve and protect in their community. That was a, a really a wonderful event Sunday, and I was very proud to attend that, so congratulations. You know, people don't realize what our police and fire do, and, and the situations that they're in most of the time, as far as protecting us. Third, or excuse me, fourth, the Little Fort Lions Club is doing our annual Steak and Egg Breakfast, honoring, of course, the late, great Bob Abbott, and of course, Martin Gus. It's going to be this Sunday, this Sunday, February the 13th, over at the Waukegan Yacht Club, starting at 8 o'clock in the morning, and ending at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Obviously, the Little Fort Lions Club has been an organization that's been here since 1974, and we're going to be raising money for diabetes, and a lot of the community needs that the Little Fort Lions Clubs are, are into. So hope to, to see you there this Sunday at the Waukegan Yacht Club. Also, I'm going to ask, I know chief, you know, we talked about the towing ordinance, but I really, I know we've spoken in, in committee, but I'd like to get your, you know, your total input on this, I, I don't know if you've discussed it with your staff, on especially how, you know, we're going to be, you know, implementing the changes of this ordinance, or anything that you need to do?